All right. It is Tuesday, October 11th, 2022. Our City Council Work Session calling to order. Notice the public that we may, Council may vote to go into Executive Session for legal advice on any of the agitized items. Roll call, please.
Mayor Deasy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Here.
Councilmember House.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Solis.
Present.
Councilmember Shimonie.
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Solis, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flagstaff of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Shimonie, our mission statement?
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Aslan, our land acknowledgement?
Thank you, Mayor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations, who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. And with that, we are down to Agenda Item 4, Public Participation. I don't have any cards. I'm not seeing anything online at this time. So we're down to Agenda Item 5, Review of Draft Agenda for the October 18th, 2022 City Council Meeting. Council, any questions? Any... Sorry about that. Oh, but I am seeing a yellow flag in the back for an online comment for this agenda item?
Yes, Mayor. I have Michelle James. Michelle, you can go ahead and address Mayor and Council. Michelle? Michelle?
Michelle, we're going to go ahead and take you off as presenter and redo it and see if that helps. Ms. James, can you go ahead and unmute yourself?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that, for assisting me in getting on here. I do have some public comments. I'm pulling up here right now. So, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, my name is Michelle James. I'm the Executive Director of Friends of Flagstaff's Future. I'm here today to request that the Council slow down and approve, the approve, excuse me, I'm sorry, slow down the approval process timeline as proposed by Northern Arizona Healthcare at the September 29th Council Retreat. This NIH proposed timeline seeks planning and zoning commission approval in November and final council approval by December 13th of this year. At the Council Retreat, many of you expressed concerns about the NIH proposed rush timeline. City staff also have significant concerns regarding the many outstanding issues that NIH has yet to address in their application. These include commitments by NIH on issues such as transportation, roadway design, intersection design, public transit, fire service, and what will happen at the existing campus. Additional staff recommendations include the need for a travel demand management plan, addressing the climate and housing emergencies, adhering to the Climate Neutrality Plan, providing recreational facilities, and compliance with Dark Sky Regulations. It was clear at the public meeting held by NIH via Zoom last night that the public has many of the same concerns related to mitigation measures that city staff have identified as needing more information and written commitments from NIH. FQ feels that many of the questions raised at last night's public meeting were inadequately answered, and some of the information provided at this meeting was misleading. For example, a written slide in the NIH presentation said that the project had been given the go-ahead by the Flagstaff Sustainability Department. As we all know, this is untrue. FQ urges Council and NIH to take the time that's needed to work together to get firm commitments now about how this project will develop in the years to come. Our community needs to weigh the project impacts, discuss their concerns, get detailed answers to their questions, and ensure that mitigation measures are well thought out and included in the final development agreement. The long-term impacts on Flagstaff are too important. The multiple issues I've mentioned here need to be addressed adequately before a rezoning approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And I understand that's our last comment? Thank you. Then we are down to Agenda Item Number 6, October Work Aniversaries. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, good afternoon. I think Shannon Anderson is going to lead us in this very important discussion. Shannon, are you ready?
I'm ready.
In person, Shannon Anderson.
They could just run down and be all excited. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Shannon Anderson. I've got a presentation for you today to share our October Work Aniversaries. We'll get started here. So, starting with our five-year anniversaries, we've got a couple. Matthew Sadio, working in our Streets Operations Team, and Jeremy Degater, who works for, as a project manager in City Engineering, are some of our five-year recipients this month. We also have Michael Stotter, who also works in Streets, and April Webb, who works in our Police Emergency Communications Center as a supervisor. And then lastly, for five years, we have Officer Schneider, who's with our Flagstaff Police Department. Moving on to our 10-year anniversaries, we've got Felicia Correo. She's one of our Recreation Leaders and Pros. And then Heidi Hansen, you know, our interim Deputy City Manager, as well as our Economic Vitality Division Director. For our 15-year anniversaries, our very own Brandi Suda, our Finance Director, and Carolyn Ogine, who is a Library Page. And then Patrick Brown, who's in the back of the room, in case you want to give him an air high-five, celebrating 15 years, Purchasing Director. And then our 25-year-plus, to kick us off, we'll start with Martin Ins, who you've seen many times at the dais, talking about bike and pedestrian infrastructure. Martin is celebrating his 25 years. He came to Flagstaff from the Midwest via Chicago. He's been a wonderful and versatile coworker over his winding path through the city. He started in 1997 in the Planning Division, working current planning cases like Boulder Point and Ponderosa Trails. In 2005, Martin joined Flagstaff Metropolitan Planning Organization, FMPO as we might know it, as their second employee. He served in the role of the multimodal transportation planner for the FMPO. He hit his stride professionally, and all things alternative modes are his true passion. While at the FMPO, he celebrated the completion of the 50th Mile of the Foot Trails and the planning and ultimate construction of multiple foot trails, such as Arizona Trail of McMillan-Mesa and the Matt Kelly Bridge over Cedar Avenue. In 2019, he transitioned back to the City of Flagstaff, and this is when he joined City Engineering as one of the first multimodal transportation planners as part of that group. He was instrumental in developing the pedestrian and bicycle plans that became part of Proposition 419. With this success, the ballot ensured that the city continues to have reliable source of funding to implement the 20-year pedestrian and bike programs. Lately, Martin's been focusing his time on the, to complete the Active Transportation Master Plan, the city's first comprehensive plan for bicycle and pedestrian programming and facilities, to make that a huge success. So congratulations to Martin. Oh, you're here. Come on up. Yes, I was looking on the screen to see if you were up there. Come on down. It's The Price is Right.
Thank you, Shannon. Well, I'll make this quick. My wife, Donna, and I came here from Chicago 25 years ago. We wanted to move out west, and our idea was to give Flagstaff a few years and kind of see what happened, and then kind of decide what other adventures we might have. And to make a short story long, 25 years have come and gone, and we have absolutely no intention at this point of leaving here. So we're stuck, and I think that's either a testament to the power of a lack of inertia or the, just the simple draw of this place. And I tend to think it's the latter. This really is a wonderful place to live and work. You know we have lots of challenges, but we have a ton of opportunities, too. There's a huge upside. I think it's unlikely that you'll have me for another 25 years, but whatever time we have left, I hope I can be part of contributing to making this community move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Martin.
So next, we have Bobby. I know that he's not going to be able to join us today, but we'll still celebrate his contributions to our organization. He started with us in October of 97. He moved from the role of firefighter to engineer in 2001, and then on to captain in 2008. He's definitely one of the Flagstaff Fire Department's senior leaders, and he's not only served in that leadership role as part of that command staff, but also for the labor group as well. So our next employee, Ralph, Ralph Hernandez, he started work for the city again 25 years ago. We have quite a few hitting their 25 mark this month. Ralph works in wastewater collections as a maintenance worker. And he started working on his ADQ Wastewater Collection Certification and has achieved that through a Grade 4. He's also obtained an Arizona Department of Agriculture Pest Management Certification and his Class B CDL. He always volunteers to operate combo trucks and could probably tell you where every manhole is in town. That could be a good trivia game, maybe. He enjoys the outdoors, camping, riding his quads, playing softball, driving, and cleaning his Corvette. That sounds like fun. So congratulations to Ralph on your 25 years. Just want to make sure he wasn't in the room with us. And then next, we'll have Lieutenant Dar, Lieutenant Ryan Dar. He started with our Police Department in October of 96, so 26 years, celebrating with the city. He completed his criminal justice degree at NAU while he finished up his intern prior to moving into the Police Department in a full-time position. After completing his academy, he spent several years in patrol, served as one of our field training officers, we refer to them as FTOs, and also a phlebotomy officer. He was also serving on the State Gang Task Force at the time. He transferred to Criminal Investigations in 2005 and promoted to Sergeant in 2012. He then moved on to Lieutenant most recently in 2021. Today, Officer Ryan Dar serves as the Criminal Investigation Section. He oversees that group. He serves as an Executive Board Member for Victim Witness Services, Domestic Violence Fatality Review Board, as well as the Crime Free Multi-Housing Program. He has several accommodations in his file for his service, and he's also received one of our City Managers Excellence Awards. So congratulation to Ryan on his 26 years here with the City of Flagstaff. We also have Eric Caputo. He's one of our Battalion Chiefs with our Fire Department. He actually started with the Flagstaff Police Department, believe it or not. That isn't necessarily very common, but worked with them as an evidence technician, then a police officer, and then in the corporal detective role. He moved over to the Flagstaff Fire Department as a firefighter in 2001, promoted to an engineer with that work group in 2008, on to captain in 2011, and most recently, he became a Battalion Chief in 2018. Eric has served as a member of the SWAT EMT, the Fire Investigation Program Manager, and he also managed the Professional Standards Program as the Training Coordinator. He's definitely a valued member of the Command Staff for the Flagstaff Fire Department, and they are very grateful for his contributions. I believe Eric said he was going to be here today. Just taking a look if he's online. He may have been called out. Well, congratulations to Mr. Caputo. And then Martha, Martha Villalobos. She works for our library. This is some of the information they've shared with us about Martha. Her versatility and adaption to meet the many challenges over her 32 years at the County Correctional Facility Library. It's a long-term employment, definitely. She's committed to her work and is resourceful in carrying out her daily duties, following these protocols as set up as a City of Flagstaff employee. She makes selections of the library materials and then weeds out things that might be damaged or that needs to be replaced. She also ensures acquisitions are provided to inmates in a timely manner. She's courteous, patient, and respectful, both with inmates and prison authorities. She's bilingual with a fluency in Spanish, which is helpful when translations are requested with the Spanish-speaking inmates, involving access to those library materials. She resolves matters with the cool and calm demeanor and is always willing to help with tasks that arise, including sorting out materials coming back from inmate shakedowns. During the pandemic, she has reallocated a portion of her time to work at the East Flagstaff Library, helping with curb sideholds. It's definitely been fruit for us for the local community and to receive library material in a timely manner. So congratulations, Martha. One of the quotes they shared with us is that Martha's an invaluable asset to our organization, bringing her library duties to an inmate population in need. So congratulations, Martha. Are you with us online?
Yes, I am.
Hi, Martha. It's great to hear from you. Would you like to say a few words to Council?
Well, it doesn't seem like it's 32 years, but thank you very much. And I want to thank my supervisor, William S. Carza, that he's always been there for whenever I need something. Thank you.
Congratulations, Martha.
Thank you, Martha.
So that's all we have for you today. We'll see you again next month.
Thank you, Shannon. With that, we are down to Agenda Item Number 7, our City Manager Report. And we do have a couple of public participants, but I'll wait until after the report for those.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, yeah, that would make sense. These reports generally don't garner public comment, but we're glad to have that. I'd like to get through my report, which is very brief, and then turn it over to folks to speak to both our Capital Projects Monthly Update. We'll have somebody from our City Engineering and Capital Improvements Division speaking to that, as well as an update from our Sustainability Division. So with respect to the report, just a few tidbits, as we always do, and in no particular order. Want to give some props here to our firefighters, who have been conducting several public education events. A couple of nice photos for you to enjoy with our fire personnel, working with the young students, educational programs. With respect to our Police Department, I will note, again, participation in outreach and education. Sergeant Brockman helping out with the Driver's Ed Program at Coconino High School. Also assistance with the Oktoberfest event and the upcoming elections. Thank you to our Police Department. Thank you to Chief Musselman and the team for helping out in the Town Hall Forum that occurred last Thursday on the very important topic of noise, potential noise ordinance. Moving on to Public Works, some, some odds and ends there, but I will point out ongoing progress with respect to the replacement of our streetlights. Thank you to the street lighting team. And a couple of nice photos for you to enjoy on the very important project upstream. We call this the Schultz Creek Basins. This has been just a wonderful project in terms of everything coming together, land ownership being held by the city, the location being just right, just suitable to accomplish the intended purpose of detention of floodwaters, which is, which is more important now, of course, than it was, this directly attributed to the pipeline fire and the resulting burn scar. The project is well underway, and in fact, we'll see completion, we think, this month. So just a great story and work in progress. Thank you to all who have been involved with that. We had a good alliance meeting on September 30th. Thank you, Mayor, for your comments at that meeting. We talked about ballot measures, flooding updates, and a discussion about recruitment, which is, of course, an important topic for all of us these days. Some time ago, on September 19th, but it did not make my last report, we had a nice badging ceremony inside this room for some of our administrative personnel with our Flagstaff Fire Department. Shannon and I attended that. You have some nice images to enjoy in the report. Specific acknowledgement to Battalion Chief Kyle Denham, Earl Collender, who was promoted to the rank of Battalion Chief, assigned to training, and Kristo Fennell, who was hired to the rank of Deputy Fire Chief of Operations. Congratulations, gentlemen. We have an upcoming City-County meeting on October 17th. That agenda has been set. We will be talking about flooding and ballot measures, also a regional plan update and related topics. We look forward to that. An update just on something that we called out for discussion a couple of weeks ago, and that is the city liaison or appointment, appointment as a city liaison to the High Country Humane Organization to that board. Thank you, Kevin Finsell, for stepping up and showing your interest in serving in this very important way. Much appreciated. Recruitment, an offer has been made and accepted by our new City Engineer. Stay tuned, as we will be posting that name and photo upcoming, so we're excited. His start date will be October 31st. I believe we have two division leaders starting with us on October 31st. Council, you'll be seeing some new faces soon, so help is on the way, and that's good What else? An Akona meeting on the 5th, a water conference that is currently taking place. The city is being well represented by Mr. Brad Hill. Others are there as well. And last, but not least, with respect to my report, thank you to Vice Mayor Sweet and a couple of nice photos of the lasagna that was enjoyed with many of our Public Works employees on October 5th between shifts. This was all volunteer efforts, homemade lasagna, all on behalf of many of the elected officials here. Just want to thank you. It was a wonderful event, and I think greatly appreciated. Okay, that's it for my report. If we can turn this over to our Capital Projects Team for their monthly update. Thank you.
Eli Reisner, City of Flagstaff Capital Improvements Project Manager, Senior Lead, here to go over the Capital Projects Monthly Update for August 22 report, completed by staff in early September and includes updates for the month of August. There's a lot of information in this report, which is included in your packet, so I'll just be going over eight of the 17 projects in various stages that made it on this report.
Thank you. Sorry, just one sec. We're having some technical difficulties with the presentation that's spazzing out right now a little bit.
Okay. I can try to reshare it here if that'll help.
To everyone on the online meeting, we apologize. We stepped out, so we stopped and restarted the meeting, see if that helps. Eli, could you go ahead and reshare?
Yeah.
Success. Thank you.
So for the first project is our Boulder Point University App Traffic, Traffic Calming Number 13 on the map. The Transportation Commission approved designs for traffic circles in the Boulder Point Neighborhood in two locations on University Avenue at the Majestic Road and Tomball Way Intersections on June 1st, 2022. The estimates for the permanent traffic calming in Boulder Point, which includes two traffic circles, bumpouts, and raised crosswalks, is approximately $400,000. A funding source has been identified, and the next step is to hire a design consultant to complete the final design. The next project is Spruce Wash, Cedar to Dortha and Dortha Inlet, Number 21 on the map. This project consists of improvements to the Spruce Wash Channel in the Sunnyside Neighborhood from Cedar Avenue to south of Dortha Avenue. This work is in response to the damage that occurred during the 2021 monsoon flooding from the museum fire burn scar. We are happy to report that the project is substantially complete, and Dortha Avenue is now open to through traffic. For the next projects, we have the Coconino State's Improvements Phase 1 and Phase 2 Projects, Numbers 8 and 5 on the map. These are two separate utility and roadway improvements projects located on several streets in the Coconino State's neighborhood. The August 7th Pipeline Fire West flooding brought a significant amount of floodwaters and debris onto the project sites for the second time. This resulted in cleanup and removal of flood debris, reworking ABC at curb locations, and potentially oversaturating and further destabilizing the already unstable subgrade soils below the roadway area. Even prior to the flooding events, both projects required significant roadway subgrade stabilization on all reconstructed streets within the projects prior to asphalt paving. Paving portions of these projects have since occurred in September on the Navajo Drive from Beale to Murray portion of the Phase 1 project, and on Crescent Drive from Meade to Talkington portion of the Phase 2 project, and is scheduled to occur at the end of October for the remainder of the Navajo, Talkington, and Talkington Side Streets portions of the Phase 2 project. Next project is the Flagstaff Downtown Mile Safety and Connectivity Improvement Project, Number 23 on the map. The Downtown Mile Project consists of a group of city and local agency projects located in downtown Flagstaff and surrounding the BNS Railway Corridor. The city has partnered with ADOT, BNSF Railway, Mountain Line, Amtrak, and the Army Corps of Engineers for the overall Downtown Mile Project and/or projects that include the Rio de Flag Flood Control Project, which I'll be going over briefly, the Rio de Flag Pedestrian Tunnel Project, the Lone Tree Overpass Project, which I will also be going over, the Florence, or the Florence to Walnut Pedestrian Underpass Project, the Milton Bridge Reconstruction Project, and the Mountain Line Downtown Connection Center Project. In May 2022, the city applied for a multimodal program discretionary grant through US Infra Rural Program for the Downtown Mile Project. On September 12th, the city received notification of the grant award in the amount of $32.5 million. With that funding secured, the Downtown Mile Project is now funded and will move forward with a recommendation of award for the Design Services Contract that will be presented before Council on October 18th. The next project is the Rio de Flag Flood Control Project, Number 16 on the map. The purpose of the Rio de Flag Flood Control Project is to remove the hazards associated with the 100-year storm event, which include property damage, life, safety concerns, and community economic impacts. From research conducted by the Army Corps, it was determined that a significant flood would damage approximately 1,500 structures valued at over $916 million and cause 93 million. From research conducted by the Army Corps, it was determined that a significant flood would damage approximately 1,500 structures valued at over $916 million and cause $93 million in economic damages, for a total impact of over $1 billion. Work continued on this project in August to refine the design and the real estate documents. The next project is the Lone Tree Overpass Project, number 10 on the map. The Lone Tree Overpass Project will provide a grade-separated crossing over the future Rio de Flag drainage and BNSF Railway Corridor from Butler Avenue to Route 66. Funding for this project is provided through voter-approved bonds as designated in the 2018 Proposition 420. Work continued in August on the project design in anticipation of the 60% design schedule for September 26th, which has since been received. On August 24th and 25th, the city held an all-agency workshop in Flagstaff to review project design and discuss coordination of the Lone Tree Overpass and the Rio de Flag projects. These type of coordination meetings are held every three weeks with all project stakeholders and team members. The next project is the Library Entrance Project, which is number 11 on the map. This is a project to bring the library entrance into ADA compliance with new handicap ramp and new overall vision for the entrance. Construction is currently ongoing, with completion estimated for the end of the calendar year. The next and last project is Protected Intersections at Butler Beaver and Butler San Francisco, number 25 on the map. This project consists of a feasibility design of protected intersections in two locations on Butler Avenue at the Beaver Street and San Francisco Street Intersections. Much like they sound, these protected intersections will separate bicycle traffic from vehicular traffic. WSP has been awarded a design contract for a 15% level design feasibility study. This concludes the Capital Projects monthly update for the month of August. We'll be back at council in early November with project updates for the month of October. Does council have any questions or comments?
Thank you, council. Councilmember Schimoni.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everybody. Eli, thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate it. I have a couple of questions for you and comments. So, in regards to the roundabouts that you mentioned, I really appreciate that there's an emphasis being placed on addressing the bike lane concerns, and that they're not overlapping with the car lane like they currently are. So, I just hope that that maintains as you progress with those plans to ensure that those bikes are separated from those moving vehicles. And in regards to the University of Beulah Roundabout, there was a valuation mentioned that was done in, on September 8th. Are you able to speak to the valuation that was done and any of the numbers that were given? Last we heard was, I think, before our break, Trevor spoke about the valuation process and that the cost was going to be dramatically less than what we were being quoted, and I'm hoping that you might have some numbers to share.
Councilmember, I do, I would not be able to speak to that, but I believe Trevor Henry is actually on, on teams here and might be able to speak to that.
Yeah, thank you, Eli. Good afternoon, council, councilmember Schimoni. So, are you specifically talking about the Boulder Point Traffic Calming Projects?
The Beulah University Roundabout.
Oh, okay. So, the Beulah University Roundabout Project. So, what we did back in June, we gave an update to council. We are currently exploring value engineering ideas. We're still working through that effort. The designer, who is Shepherd Wesnitzer, and our project manager, David Peterson, they are currently working on that. Our plan is to finish that up in the next few weeks, and then we will incorporate those changes into the GMP, which will be in front of council sometime in December, in order to meet our schedule to start construction in the spring of 2023.
Okay. And to my recollection, city manager, we were talking about how if this was coming in twice as much as budgeted, that council would have a chance to weigh in on that. And Trevor, you had mentioned that you and the team were going to change the project to fit within the budget. Just want to make sure we're still on that same track.
Yeah, Count, Your Honor, councilmember Schimoni, I believe the budget that we have been given for FY '23, we are working within that budget, and if we can, we will reduce it based on these value engineering ideas, and we will, we will bring that forward.
Awesome. Okay, very good. Thank you for that. And then my other comments are just that, you know, it's great to see the protected intersections at San Fran and Butler and Beaver and Butler, very exciting. And lastly, the right sizing effort on Fremont to go from four lanes to two lanes. Is that a conversation that is deep? Does anyone know the timeline? Does that go back before the Transportation Commission, and does that come to the council at some point?
So, Your Honor, councilmember Schimoni, that is a, a project that transportation has been undertaking, and I'm hoping Jeff Baumann might be either online or in, in the council chambers to help clarify and maybe give some more additional information.
Jeff, are you online?
I am here. Thanks, Trevor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Jeff Baumann, city traffic engineer and interim city engineer. Yeah, the Fremont Boulevard, yeah, we could call it right sizing or lane diet. It's actually a traditional lane diet going from four lanes to three. That's the definition, actually, of a lane diet. We were, that project came through city staff late in calendar year 21, and was scheduled, we collected data, was scheduled with the Transportation Commission in February of '22, and the Transportation Commission gave us direction, a recommendation to restripe that road. We heard from a number of public citizens, many of the same, that have been emailing this week, and gave us direction to restripe the road. We've been working on a restripping plan and trying to find funding for that, or a way to incorporate that into another project, like a summer paving program next summer. So, we're working on those plans. Typically, the way this works is the commission gives us their recommendation, and we go do it. And after it's done, we collect data, we notify the neighborhood, and we find out if it worked or not. So, that's the typical steps. I know there's been a lot of public interest, and I'm sorting through all the emails. There are a number of very long emails, which I haven't, I haven't had a chance to respond to yet, but I will get to all of them at some point this week.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. And quick follow-up to that, is there a way to have that project come before council before we move ahead with a plan?
I'm sure there could be. Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the mechanism would be, councilmember Schimoni, but I mean, that, that's not the process that we follow, but I don't know why we couldn't do something different, something we'd have to huddle on and talk about.
Just given, you know, Mayor and council, given the school and the park and the neighborhood and the concerns of the pedestrians and the families and the emails we've received, I, I would like for us to weigh in on this. I think that the, I think we can help with this and making sure that we do something good for the community. And Jeff, if possible, it'd be great to bring this before council, but I'm willing to chat with the city manager or figure out how that, that works. Thank you, city manager, for the thumbs up. Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Trevor and Eli. I really appreciate it.
With that, I'm not seeing any additional questions, so we're able to move on to sustainability. Yes, that'll, I'll hold that after the full city manager report.
Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Director. I'm here to provide a very brief update on the work that sustainability has been taking on in the month of September. Really excited to announce that the electric vehicle charging stations at the airport, the project is complete. There are six new stalls, and they are available for public use. And similar to other city-sided electric vehicle charging locations, there currently is no fee for the use at this time. This was also made possible by a grant through our partners, APS, and of course, our internal partners at the airport. I'm excited to talk about another collaboration, the Climate Resilience Project, which is a collaborative initiative between the Sustainability Office and the Public Library. We hosted our first event in mid-September, and this was called Climate Conversation, and it was for community members to collaboratively, that's a hard word, collaboratively learn and discuss climate impacts and vulnerabilities in Flagstaff. And we had about 30 community members participate in this facilitated discussion, and there was a nice write-up in the Daily Sun that is hyperlinked in the report. Sustainability also launched, and let me just scroll down just a bit, I'm really excited about this, but we launched our Sustainable Minded Business Program, and this is a free resource and consultation program that will help businesses conserve resources and save money. And our first phase of the program really is focusing on short-term rentals. So, we've created resource guides, not only for visitors who are coming to Flagstaff and staying in short-term rentals, but also for the property managers or owners. So, the link to those guides are included in the report, and I encourage you to take a look, and if you know anyone that could use this, I would really appreciate any assistance in getting this information out. And I just want to have a shout-out to the Tourism Commission, as well as our Business Advisory Group, who helped vet this initiative with our team. All right. Now, focusing on climate action specifically, we are really excited to continue our work with the Youth Climate Advisory Group, and they are underway, very energetic, and making big plans to recruit more students. And they are planning a fall event and creating educational presentations on carbon neutrality planned target areas and working in, within their schools on climate action plans. So, we're really excited about this partnership and our continued collaboration with FU SD. And again, in partnership with our friends at the Public Library, we are hosting a Youth Climate Book Club, and this is starting this month in October. And this is just an opportunity for youth to read and discuss books. This book is All We Can Save, and they will be facilitating climate-focused conversations centered on youth. And just scrolling down, I just want to pick up a couple of highlights here. I am excited to announce that we have been partnering with APS to help them talk about electrification in their service territory, and so we participated on a trade ally webinar to talk about electrification in our community and steps in moving towards electrification. We are also working to create revisions to the Carbon Neutrality Plan. We had mentioned to council last time, we are up in front of you with an informational update, that we would be bringing forward revisions to merge the Carbon Neutrality Plan that was adopted by this council with the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. So, it's just going to bring in more target areas and make those two adopted plans more seamless. And moving on down to community stewards, I'm really excited to, I'm not very excited tonight, very excited about this too, but Sonoma, who had been our Stream Stewards Coordinator through the AmeriCorps Vista Program, Sonoma Boynton has accepted a second term with us, and we've been working very closely with Water Services and Stormwater to bring programming to the community, and this is in collaboration also with Friends of the Rio. Our September litter cleanups, we've had a lot of activity, you can see here on the slide deck, that we had 193 volunteers in the month of September who dedicated more than 350 hours of their time to pick up litter in our community and collecting over 25 bags of trash and almost 10 bags of recycling. And for the first time included, this is a late addition, but is on the screen here, our Engage, Empower, and Elevate Grant, which was awarded to CATS, Community Action Team, had started the litter cleanups, and as a reminder, this program is designed to empower individuals who are experiencing homelessness or threatened potentially by homelessness to earn a living wage and assist us in picking up litter in our community. And so CATS launched this month, and we had 16 volunteers who worked a total of 29 hours picking up 28 bags of trash and 13 bags of recycling, and included is a photo of our participants this month. And scrolling down into food systems, the Sustainable Flag Series: Preparing Your Garden for Winter Workshop was held at the Bonito Communities Garden in mid-September, and we partnered with Terrabytes and Native Americans for Community Action, and we had about 20 community members participate in that workshop. We also co-hosted a fruit gleaning event with Flagstaff Food Link in mid-September in Coconino Estates, and communities collected, community members collected over 60 pounds of apples, which were then donated and offered to volunteers. In our material management's focus areas, our Expert Composting Certification Program launched in early September, and this is a free program. It's a five-week course, providing residents with skills they need to become more effective composters, educators, and advocates within their community. And I think I will just jump on down to upcoming events. I know that councilmember Aslan gave a commission update for us. We have a lot of events coming up in October, and I do want to point out our Fall Festival on October 15th, and this is really our appreciation to our community partners, as well as our volunteers in the community. So, if you don't have any plans this Saturday, stop on by the Sustainability Office from 12 to 2, meet some of our volunteers. Stacy Fobar was kind enough to post a potential meeting quorum, so come on down. We hope to see you there. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Nicole. Councilmember House.
Quick question for you, Nicole. Thank you for the update. I just wondered, what was the status on the Equity Advisory Group? Or is that still being advertised? Is, do you need help with advertising that, or where's that at right now?
We have, thank you for asking, councilmember House. We have gone through all the applications and are in the process of inviting the participants that have been identified to join the team, so we hope to have an update for you next month. Thank you.
Councilmember Schimoni.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Nicole. Great, great update. Two questions for you. Are there any updates on the Youth Commission that you all were working on?
Well, so that has really, thank you, councilmember Schimoni, that has really evolved into the Youth Advisory Group, and after discussion internally, due to the restrictions, if you will, in the formal commission process and working with young adults, we felt that it would be better to have a, a less restrictive process. So, that's, our Youth Advisory Group really has taken that role, and you will be hearing from them.
Very good. And then, secondly, with the partnership with CATS with the cleanup, do you know if they're able to pay the individuals with cash, or is it, do you know how that works?
Councilmember Schimoni, off the top of my head, I can get back to you on that, how the final result of that, but that was what our hope was. I just would like to add that the participants in the CATS program will be earning minimum wage.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that is, councilmember House.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Nicole, come back, please. Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. So, and I'm, thank you for, for presentation, and I'm glad Ms. Stacy Bicays in the room, just, just sharing some information that I gathered from the Rural Transportation last month is for the Arizona EV Plan. Yes. So, between this month and December, there will be like statewide outreach, how to spend the $76.5 million to install high-efficient EV charging stations across the state. What I've gathered so far is that they're looking at installing every 50 miles, and in the presentation by Mr. Ed Stillings of the Federal Highway Administration Office in Phoenix, so there's one in Monseberg, and then the next stop will be Twin Arrows. And I kind of had like side conversation with some of our ADOT leaders, said, why did you skip Flagstaff? Like, well, Flagstaff has already some charging stations, but we don't have high-efficient charging stations. So, what their intention is, because, is to partner with private, private investors and developers, kind of. developers, kind of maximize an existing, let's say, a gasoline station or a truck stop. And so, but please be involved with that outreach, outreach process, and see if we could bring some of those high-efficient charging stations here, because, kind of make a strong case, well, you know, you drive through Flagstaff on the way to the Grand Canyon, and, yes. So, so that's the, and the email is azevplan@azdot.gov. And then for also looking into some grant opportunities with, and this may also be, be interspersed with our Arctic Transportation Master Plan that's for approval soon, is the Transportation Alternative Program, which actually highly encourages local participation. It's $11.8 million in grant opportunities a year. And of course, the, let's kind of pay attention to some guidelines and potential notice of funding ability for the Neighborhood Equity and Access Grants, $3 billion, that has strong component for drought and climate. So see if I could tap into those grants. And I know we are very aggressive in trying to bring state and federal dollars to all of our local programs. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Solison. If I may, just add regarding the electric vehicle infrastructure plan through ADOT, and we are very much keeping an eye on that and voicing our preferences. But we're also working closely with APS to see what opportunities can be cultivated there.
Then the last one is the Reconnecting Community Pilot Grants.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCarthy?
Hi, Nicole. I had a question about the electric vehicle charging stations at the airport. So is there a limit of how long you can park there? I mean, if I have an electric vehicle and I'm going to Seattle for a week, can I leave my car there for a week? That wouldn't seem good.
Correct, correct.
So it's only, like, you charge it and then move it?
Yes. And this is, this is going to take education. There is signage associated with the electric vehicle charging stations. But this is similar to how we have our charging stations that are going in at the Visitor Center and here at City Hall.
All right, thank you. You've thought it through.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. We'll move on to the public participants at this point. We have in-person Sasha Stortz.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and City Staff. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here today. As was referenced earlier, I and several others are here about the Fremont project in the Capitol Projects Report. I'm a resident of the Cheshire neighborhood and mom to a small kid. I would love to be able to send my kid to the playground by herself as she gets up, as she gets older. But right now, she is probably going to be a teenager before I feel comfortable with that because of the speed with which folks go through this neighborhood. A traffic study was, was done, and it showed that there was a lot of speeding that was happening. And as was referenced, there was a Traffic Commission meeting where restriping was discussed. Also, what was discussed included bringing some design options back to the commission, as well as engaging residents in a bit of a mini-planning process. And I'm here today, you know, we just went back and looked at that video, and I'm here today because we are confused about how we can engage in this, and we really care about getting it right. There, there are some concerns we have with what we've seen of the design for the restriping that's in the, the report that you all have. Everything from the placement of the bike lines, lanes being next to the road instead of next to the sidewalk, to the side of the street that the parking is on, to the width of the lanes themselves. And so we'd really love the opportunity to be able to engage in this process and, you know, provide feedback as residents of this neighborhood who really want to get this right the first time. My other really big concern is that restriping from, you know, what's now a four-lane road, something that is bigger than many areas of 180, down to three lanes, one in each direction plus a center turn lane, just isn't going to slow folks down enough that, you know, folks drive the way they feel. And so we really are concerned about the safety of pedestrians at the crosswalk and doing a restriping project that doesn't change the feel, that that won't change how people behave in the crosswalk. I've had a number of near misses while I was in that crosswalk of almost being hit with my family. And so we just really would, would like to see the restriping paired with crosswalk protections, especially if there's a center lane involved in this design. We need some kind of protection around the crosswalk so that if there is a driver that's yielding to pedestrians, somebody else can't pass them and plow right into pedestrians in that crosswalk. So I really just want us to be able to have a holistic, engaged plan, and, and we're asking for feedback on how we can do that, how we can really help. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sasha. And we do have one online participant?
Yes, Mayor and Council. I have Audrey Cruz. Audrey, you may go ahead and address Mayor, Council.
Hello there, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Great. Hello, Mayor, Councilmembers and City Staff. Thanks so much for taking my public comment. I also want to comment on the same Fremont restriping project that Sasha just mentioned. I'm also a resident of the Cheshire neighborhood and am concerned that the, the current plan of dieting the road from a two-directional, four-lane road to a three or two directions in that one center turn lane, turn lane, is, is somewhat inappropriate when addressing the speeding solution. If people are speeding in our neighborhood, which we know they are from the, the study that was done, that center turn lane really just allows people to move out of the way of speeding vehicles and let the directional traffic continue moving unimpeded. And so I, I take some issue with the proposed solution, because I don't think it's actually addressing the issue of the, the cars speeding by. In the, the schematic that was provided in the report, it also references a parking lane, which I think is very needed. I live in the townhomes just behind Falla. I watch Falla kids get dropped off, and cars are consistently parked in the bike lane that runs along Fremont. So I'd really like to make sure that parking lane exists on the east side of Fremont Boulevard, at least between the high school or Falla and the park, where people are also parking. And I, in eliminating hopefully that center turn lane and just having two directions of traffic lanes, I'd like to see the bike lanes widened, more buffers put in, those bike lanes adjacent to curbs rather than in between the parking lane and the, the moving traffic. I want to echo what Sasha said about, I'm disappointed that the plan or the current schematic doesn't really seem to be addressing that crosswalk issue. I think that's a place where this could really be a win-win-win situation for teen Flagstaff, for our neighborhood, for community engagement. It seemed to me, from being at the February 2nd Transportation Commission, that there was going to be more opportunity to provide input and energy as a community member. And one of the things that we had suggested is maybe painting that crosswalk, sprucing it up with vegetation planters, things to make it more obvious. And I'd like to see that crosswalk also get the kind of attention that the crosswalk on Butler by the High Country Conference Center in NAU gets with the flashing lights, the big pedestrian signs, and/or some texturization and paint like we're seeing in the center of Aspen Street in between Leroux and San Francisco.
Thank you.
So.
I apologize to you. Yeah, thank you. We have three minutes. Do we have any other public participants?
No, that was all for today.
All right, thank you. Well, I would like to voice my input on this issue, that I think additional traffic mitigation measures for bike-pet safety need to be assessed for this matter. I'm not certain, though, that it needs to come directly to council right away, but rather get more input from the Transportation Commission and City Staff on what would be the most appropriate, as well as with the input of the community on what they would like to see. Driving on that road a lot, I mean, additional crosswalks, stop signs, I think, in an area right next to a school and a playground would be appropriate. And I would like us to take a further assessment, get the community input before it does, if it does come before council for that. So my input is, I think this should go back to the Transportation Commission, get a reassessment from City Staff to, with the input of the community, to see what would be best befitting for that stretch of road for bike-pet safety. Councilman McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I also think it would be good to send this back to the Transportation Commission to have them take a second look. And I think a suggestion I would make at that meeting, and I'm their liaison, so I'll be there, is that at the crosswalks, that there'd be like an island in the middle, so that a person, children, adults, whatever, can walk halfway across and then feel safe in the middle, and then wait till the traffic stops coming the other way. So, in other words, they only have to make it halfway across instead of trying to make it all the way across, which I think will make them feel safer and actually will be safer. But in, in summary, I think it would be good to ask the Transportation Commission to take a second look at this. Thank you.
You, Councilman McCarthy. I'm seeing knotted heads of, let's get a reassessment from the Transportation Commission and additional public input.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, and thank you to our public participants for your comments. We hear you loud and clear. This will be remanded back to the Transportation Commission with some input that council has just articulated, so you can expect that to happen. Thank you very much. That concludes the report. I want to take this opportunity to thank those who have had input in this report. If, I, I hope council agrees with me and when I note that the quality of the monthly reports has really ascended. And a similar comment with our work anniversaries, that one I'm going to give specific credit to Shannon Anderson and the folks in HR who are helping her with that. We started from scratch on that one, but it obviously is looking much better. These anniversaries are, are wonderful to, to witness here, and the monthly reports that are now appended to the manager's report, similar comment. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, City Manager. With that, we are down to Agenda Item Number Eight, our Post-Wildfire Flooding Update.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Appreciate you taking the time today to, once again, review some of our post-wildfire flooding updates. We're going to hear some conversations about Museum. We're going to hear some conversations about Pipeline West, some of the projects that are going on in the area, and go over some of the progress that we've made this year. Really tremendous progress, so with that, we'll get it kicked off. And I apologize, Sam Beckett, Section Director, Public Works. So again, the agenda here, we'll review the monsoon season, some of the impacts that we saw this year. I know many of you were out there and saw those impacts firsthand, but we'll discuss those today. Some of the infrastructure projects, feasibility Phase Two, which specifically for Museum, and then as well as Prop 441. Pipeline West area updates include the 2022 monsoon season as well, infrastructure in those areas, and the financial update at the very end to help put everything in perspective, as well as we'll touch quickly on the SBA loans and the communications that have gone out for those SBA loans. This here is just a reminder of what we were dealing with and some of our potential flood risks, how close these risks are to each other, yet impact completely different areas of the community. Again, all tie back to, you know, our beautiful mountain ranges and people just being negligent at the end of the day. So just always a reminder to be safe and be cautious out there. And again, towards the west, the right-hand side of your screen, you see the 2022 Pipeline Fire, and towards the middle there, in that orangish fall color, if you will, the 2019 Museum Fire burns car and the impacted regions for perspective. For Museum flood area in particular, this is some of the data that we pulled from this year to help us understand, what did we see? What were the impacts? We were fortunate this year that we didn't see significant flooding in Museum and the Schultz Creek Wash. With that said, we didn't see the numbers like we saw previously. And you'll see that in these charts here, as far as our maximum totals and our intensity readings in those areas. The numbers were a little off compared to what we saw last year. And we didn't see those long, intense storms like we saw. However, we saw storms that we kind of hoped we would see, those storms that come in, soak up, and allow for vegetation to build, and hopefully we have a good foundation moving forward. But again, we just didn't see the impacts like we saw, those same rainstorms over that exact region. And so it's just important to note that here. Mitigation measures were put in place. There was a ton of good work put in up there that did help mitigate a ton of the watershed. However, there are several areas that aren't there yet. We will talk about one of the projects. We'll hit on it really quick. It's a county project that they, I believe, have kicked off, and we'll discuss that here in just a minute. So rainfall intensities for the, this is for the date range here of June 29th, for Pipeline East versus Museum South. And you can see those rainfall intensities, while impactful, we just didn't see what we, we thought we would see. And that is something we deal with. More often than not, we saw that for two years preceding the fire in the museum area. As we roll into winter, we understand that the short-term mitigations can be a burden for many, understanding that they are there to protect their homes. There are certain pieces that we hope that residents keep in place until we do have better data, and we have seen this tried and tested in these watersheds. So we do ask that residents leave their short-term mitigations in place, yet understanding some of the bigger mitigations like concrete barrier really do make it difficult for residents to move on their, on their own. So those are items that we have worked with some of the residents, specifically in the museum area, to help remove some of those concrete barriers so they could have better access through the wintertime, and with them understanding that it does leave them at a potential risk without those being in place, but understanding that at some point you do have to, we have to figure out how do we move forward and get people to a better state of normalcy. And again, as winter preparations come around, our asks are, if you are looking to get rid of your sandbags, and again, it's not something that we are recommending by any means, but for those who choose to, please contact us via our call center line, which is 928-213-2102, and we will provide pallets. In doing so, it helps us reuse and not waste as many sandbags. So if there's any that can be reused, we're more than happy to stockpile them. We are covering them up and store them through the wintertime in case we need them to be reused for the following year, understanding many of the bags have degraded and they won't survive that, that second move. But we are trying to give that option out there for anybody looking for it. The On Forest Eluvial Fan, this one here is the West Tributary. The picture that you see here, this one here was completed and has, as you can see, kind of been tested in some sense. We did see some rains in the area, and you can see some of the flows that came through there. It did exactly what it was supposed to do. It spread out the water flow, it reduced impacts to the area, so we're pretty excited about that. We don't have a picture of it yet, but the new north fans, which will be a huge piece of the mitigation and a majority of the water, that project should be completed. of the mitigation and a majority of the water, that project should be completed by November, and that is a county project. They've done a bunch of phenomenal work on that. I don't know if the county flood control administrator is on board with us virtually tonight. If so, maybe she could speak to this. And understanding they also had a board meeting tonight, so they may not be on board. But this is something that we hope to be able to bring back at our joint work session coming up with the county-city, and hopefully they can hit on this and give us some better progress updates. But just wanted to let everybody know, there's still work going on in museum to help mitigate those impacts. Parkway Basins, this is one of the other very important projects that we're working on to try and help alleviate any impacts if we see them. Now, that potential is still there. Even with the new fan up top, there's still a very high potential to see water that we've never seen before, which is why we have done all the mitigation work we have done to date. This will be another important project to help reduce water flows, reduce sediment, and hopefully allow the stormwater system that's there to better absorb the impacts as it comes in, understanding that the amount of water coming out of the forest, once we see an event at the same magnitude like we saw last year, will most likely, well, will almost indefinitely overrun the system that we currently have in place. But again, hopefully, less significant impacts moving forward is the goal. The Parkway Basins have actually made a lot of progress. Our hope is to have all of the utilities relocated, scheduled for this fall. Tree removal will occur this fall as well, and construction in the spring to start on these projects. Again, these will be very, very impactful. They will be the last ditch effort, if you will, to reduce sediment before we get into the city's stormwater infrastructure, that first Linda Vista crossing. So these basins will be just above that. This should help get rid of any of that last bit of sediment and debris and attenuate some of that water or reduce some of the water velocities, if you will. This one here is the feasibility phase two study. So understanding that we have done a ton of great work on forest above the communities here in the city, there is still a ton of potential to come out of these watersheds. While we hope to see a bunch of regrowth and understand that we didn't see the flooding this year, we didn't see that sediment move, we still have channels in places we didn't have channels before, or seeing water flows in areas that we never saw before, and we understand those impacts are going to continue. So as we work through projects like the Parkway Basins, there are several other items listed on here, like the Grandview Improvements, the West Cedar Basin Development, the Linda Vista and Cedar Avenue Crossings, channel improvements, and the Royal Seaco modifications. Now, all of the work we did, understanding that it will still wind up down at Killep. We just have to figure out how to safely get that water moved through the community and reduce those impacts to the residents. That's what feasibility study phase two does, and that is really key for us moving forward to understand, how do we get all of that water out of the community, yet through the community? It's a tough one to figure out, and, but we've made a lot of really good progress here, and we hope to continue down that avenue moving forward. Part of the study has been going back and modeling all of the current projects. So they've added all of the projects such as Killep Detention Basins, the West Tributary. They're looking at adding the new North Fans into that, as well as the Aluvial Fans above Paradise to help us understand what those impacts will be and where do we need to mitigate, and then prioritize those projects based on, obviously, life safety and the highest threat to residents within the area. There has been significant cost-benefit analysis walkthrough in these processes from engineering to every possible aspect we could look at for impacts in the region. As we get closer on these projects, we will be working to make sure we educate the public on what these are, how they impact the community, how they benefit the communities, and what our end goal is with the completion of these projects. Part of that you've probably seen is tied to Prop 441. These projects will fund a series of projects to increase the stormwater capacity in the Spruce Wash, including channel improvements from Paradise to Killep Detention Basins, the projects we just discussed, continue improvements towards Route 66. These costs are not a small cost, and frankly, this number here is a significant number, but at the end of the day, it is what we need to get to that end goal. Again, we wouldn't have put in all this work if we didn't believe the threat was still there, and understanding that there is still a bunch of work to get done. And so these are some of the items that we're looking to get completed here shortly. With that said, Halloween, we're going to be holding a Spruce Wash Project Delivery Summit, and part of that is going to be understanding if we find the funds and we're able to get funded for these projects, how do we deliver them all in a very short period of time? As you all probably hear and you saw from our engineering team here today, there are massive projects happening around the city, all of which are just as important and need to be done in a timely fashion, yet our resources in this region are limited. So having this summit is key to better prioritize and strategically plan out our attack on some of these projects beyond just our feasibility studies here and some of the other projects that are going on within the Pipeline West area. The goal here is to not reduce service from one project to complete another, but how do we get it all done in that short timeframe? So really excited, and the support from City Manager Clifton here to help drive these summits to make sure that we're all on the same page and that we're all working together. That will jump over to Pipeline. Pipeline is unfortunately where we saw the bulk of our impacts this year. I know many of you walked the streets and were out there with the residents in the mud, in the water, trying to figure out how do we get ahead of it. This was kind of unprecedented to see, and the work that's been done afterwards, which is even more impressive, so. Again, here's some of the storm impacts. We can see the numbers are significantly higher for Pipeline West. While the two watersheds are geographically very close, the storms are so unpredictable anymore, it's tough to understand where those are going to impact and how they're going to impact in those durations. So here's just a couple of those storms that we saw impacts from and what those rain totals were. Unfortunately, while this one isn't highlighted, this is an impressive one to note. This is one of the ones we saw on the east side. Again, within a mile range, we could have seen significantly different impacts than we saw with those kind of numbers right there. With this one here, I'm going to hand it over to our Emergency Management Director and Contracts Director, Stacy Brecklin-Angs.
Thanks. That was a nice introduction. So Stacy BK, Stacy Brecklin-Angs, Grants Contracts Emergency Management Director. So Inter Basin Pipeline, a lot of you know about this pipeline. I'm going to give you a quick super history. Obviously, the pipeline was damaged in the Schultz Fire in 2010 in 28 locations. It took two years to repair that. We had a federal FEMA declaration and emergency state declaration with Arizona Department of Military Affairs funding. It took us five years to close that disaster recovery event. It's a very long-term process when we get into these recovery efforts. We created an historical booklet. Erin Young spent some time and created a really nice booklet. If you don't have a copy of that, please email me. I'd love to give it to you. It's got a lot of history about flagstaff and them taking the pipe and the mules up the Inter Basin and doing the different levels of clay pipe to concrete, to ductile iron. So a great, great book. That project actually won a state award and a national award. I actually flew to Toronto with the contractor and for a day flew to Canada. It was a quick trip, but won a national award. So a lot of history up there on the basin. I actually co-managed it with our Water Services Project Manager. The spring, water can peak up as high as 2 million gallons per day. The design capacity of the North Reservoir Filtration Plan is, the Inter Basin water is treated, is 4 million gallons a day. And overall, the Inter Basin water can account for at least 20% daily potable water demand during the peak summer months. And why I'm saying that is because the pipeline is damaged. We are not receiving any water. So we're losing quite a bit of capacity and water that we need. Right now, the Inter Basin waterline damaged in new locations above Lockit Meadow and Schultz Creek. So if you can look at that map, the 28 locations, it started just after Windy Point. I don't have a pointer, but I think here is where we had the 28 locations and then go down, but what's happened is we have seen new damage up above here. And during the Pipeline West, this was one of what we call our values at risk, was the Inter Basin. They sent a team up there. We worked very hard to save our Inter Basin, but we saw a lot of damage up above where the original 28 locations were fixed. We saw, we had put in timber walls to save, because we had so much down trees back in 2010 when we were up there. We ended up using some of the down logs to create timber walls. They actually burned during this last Pipeline West fire, so the timber walls are gone. We had a lot of road damage. A lot of the Gabian Walls and where we encapsulated the pipe and put concrete over it actually was okay, is saved. We had some drone footage that was done by David and Jeremy in Capitol, and we were able to look at a lot of that drone footage and see where some of it was saved. Some of the roads were washed out and the timber walls. What the next plan is, we met with our, we had Jacobs Engineering come up, and they spent a day with us for free. He just came up. He was the Record of Engineer in 2010, came up, and we looked at all the footage, and now what we're need to do is a trip record. We need to get up there and get a little better estimate. We have not scheduled that trip yet because we need to make sure that our team is safe and can get up there when there's not falling rocks and trees, and we'll go up with the Forest Service and our Wildland Fire Team and our Capitol Engineers and get up there and see if we can get a little better idea of the damage. We went ahead and met with DEMA, and they were able to look at some of the footage. They agreed this is an emergency. We went through their emergency procurement process internally with city staff and with purchasing director, and were approved for emergency procurement for the project. So we can technically go back to the same Record of Engineer with Jacobs and the contractor if we choose to do that. But what is a good thing is we can move pretty fast, hopefully, here as soon as the weather kind of changes. And I didn't expect rain today, did anybody? It poured at City Hall, and I looked out my window, it was hailing. So that's part of the reason we haven't really got up there and got a clear estimate, because we really want our staff to be safe and not get up in a high danger situation. So a little bit about the 20-acre sediment detention basins. Things are going great up there. I've been out there every week. I know Adam's on the line if we have any specific questions, but project is going really well. We continue to work with NRCS, which is National Natural Resource Conservation Services, Emergency Watershed Protection Project. They're out there looking at the projects and very pleased with it. We're also working to see if we can get the downstream channel stabilization funded with NRCS, and that application is, or the damage survey report is sitting with them, just waiting to see if we can get in the queue for some funding, so working on that. The Box Covert, we have a couple of concept plans that'll be presented by SWI today for improvements within ADOT Rideaway and outside of ADOT Rideaway. We're working with ADOT heavily on the Protect Formula Funds that are potential. They're with ADOT. I've had some, a number of conversations. They're just trying to figure out the package. They have the formula funds and how they're going to be able to disperse that. So either be through that Protect Formula Fund or another funding source. And then this is a little bit about, shows a photo of the basins. Of course, you all know about the 20-acre city-owned parcel that we took. We're incorporating Trail Access, Trailhead Parking, Historic Interpretation and Landscaping. We're looking and working with a potential budget adjustment or scope change with NRCS to see if we can get a fence in there, a access control fence, and some gates to see if we can get that approved, just to kind of corner off that area and so that we have protection for any vehicles trying to get in there. We're on track to complete approximately the end of the month, on the 26th, and continuing stabilization, the concrete headwalls and overflow wear structures. It's looking amazing out there. If you haven't gone out there, please do so. I'm happy to do any tours. I know Adam's out there every day, so if anybody wants a site visit, I'm happy to have you join me. And with that, I will turn it over to Sam. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Stacy. And I think it's important to note, that is a massive project. I don't know if you saw that picture right there. That is not a small piece of land, and the fact that that was completed in the time window, it's been completed by the team that's been working on that, Adam, who's been out there every single day, just a ton of good work to get this in place, kind of a one-in-a-million project. The fact that we had this option and that all of the stars aligned and that everybody was able to communicate with each other and to get this project delivered in the timeframe they did, I don't know if we'll ever see that again in that timeframe, but good work. Now, water's still going to come out of those basins. That's a lot of water, 56 acre-feet of water, I believe, or 56, yeah, right? 56 acre-feet of water? Am I saying that right? So I'm confirming with my crew here. Lot of water, still going to make its way down to Highway 180. Now, that's where it gets tricky. We got the easy part done, in a sense, which is a massive project. That should never be an easy project, but that was the easy part. Now we've got some hurdles. We've got multiple jurisdictions we've got to work through. We've got some private property we've got to work through, a ton of utilities and some funding issues. So this is where these project conversations have led us down to, is getting all that water that's going to build up there in those basins, and how do we safely get it across 180 and out of the community? So a ton of design ideas have come out of this. We've narrowed it down to two ideas. I'll let Stephen Irwin from SWI speak to those here in just a minute, as he has been just key in trying to get these designs completed and functional, and figure out how do we work with all of the different jurisdictions to get it completed? Both concepts allow for 950 CFS, which would fully contain the flow from the output of what the basins will do from 100-year storm event. With that, it gets a little technical, and that's where you don't want to hear me speak, so I'm going to let Stephen talk to that and talk about where we are and the two viable
Thank you, Sam, Mayor, Council. My name's Stephen Irwin. I'm with SWI Engineering. As Sam mentioned, we've worked the last several months with city staff, ADOT, county staff, fire department, trying to figure out the best option to get water from Highway 180 to the Rio de Flag. This first option you see on the screen here, the Box Covert currently follows the same general alignment, and then it turns to the south, and then this is undersized based on the post-wildfire flow rates. So what we're trying to do here, instead of taking this to the south and then through the existing storm drain, we looked at, narrowed it down to these two options. This first option you'll see is a double barrel. It's two 8-foot-by-5-foot box culverts, goes across 180, clips the Grand Canyon Trust driveway parking lot, and then it gets onto this fire department, city flagstaff property. From here, you can see the box ends, and stormwater will discharge into an open channel. Goes open channel through this Atwood Family Trust parcel. See, it turns here. We have another set of box culverts because this is, multiple residents and property owners use this as access, so we need to get that water under their access. So we need to get that water under their access back into the Rio de Flag. Here's the Rio de Flag, runs more or less north-south in this area. Our second option, back to, I'll show you the first option on this slide. This is the existing inlet to the existing box culvert that runs diagonal across Highway 180. What we looked at on this one was more of a straight shot route to the Rio de Flag. It will require some regrading on this Museum of Northern Arizona parcel, but as you can see, it's a straight shot from Schultz Creek all the way over to the Rio de Flag. Some positives out of this, from what we can tell, we haven't done an in-depth utility investigation yet. There should be less utility conflicts and this is a main highway in our area for local and people passing through town. So if we can get this straight shot as opposed to a diagonal crossing, impacts and closures to Highway 180 are minimized. From 180, as opposed to the option one, this will stay underground, two 8-by-5 box culverts through the church school parking lot, through their field here. We looked at an open channel option, but with this being a school and a church, we felt that that probably wasn't a safe design. So keeping that underground so all of this can still be utilized. And then it discharges back into the Rio de Flag. Another thing I'd like to point out about these two options, with option two, this is all within city limits. So, property acquisitions becomes a little bit more straightforward as opposed to crossing this direction and then this is a county island. So you have city, county, ADOT. We've worked together great so far, but I think that that property acquisition would get a little more difficult. Do we do questions now or at the end?
We've got one more.
One more? Okay. So, we put together this decision matrix. This was more from us looking at it as engineers, trying to break it down into costs, management complexity. So, how many property owners, you know, one of them has more property owners than the other. We've got this color-coded legend down here, similar to a traffic signal, green, yellow, red. Next, we have constructability. I kind of touched on this. Option one is a diagonal crossing, more impacts to Highway 180, traffic impacts, could potentially be a longer duration of construction. Option two is in city limits. There's only two property owners that we would have to work with on property acquisitions as opposed to four. You see, it is slightly less square feet of property on option one, but more property owners to negotiate with.
Thanks, Stephen.
So, I'm sorry, I have a quick question on that. So what I'm gathering, especially with the property acquisition from multiple owners, the one part on the rubric that I'm wondering about is time. So, would the option two be feasibly more likely to occur more quickly than option one?
Sure. So at this point, working with the different property owners, most likely. Option one, which would make a lot of sense, it would follow the current path, it does add some complexity in there that with one of the, one of the property owners in particular, that it's going to be a tough hurdle. It's going to be a tough hurdle and because that property owner isn't within city limits, it makes it even more challenging. We kind of have to work third-party to figure out how do we make all of that align. So, that one there is, while probably the more reasonable option, it's probably not going to be the most efficient option moving forward. So, as they went through, they started with 10 different designs. What are all of the potential concepts that could come together? These came down to the two most viable options. And again, they each come with their own complexity, but this is something we're still working through here. But yeah, option one is, does add some higher complexities with one of the property owners in particular.
Excellent. Thank you. And I'll just note that with option two, it may have a little bit higher price tag, but doing it sooner helps not just to protect residents sooner, but with the inflationary costs for construction, would potentially even be cheaper if it goes a full year, additionally a full construction season to get completed. So, as we look at these numbers, I just want to point that out. Councilmember Shemani.
Thank you, Mayor. Stephen, thank you for your presentation, your work on this with the team. So it sounds like option one would have been the ideal option if it wasn't for the complexities. Is that correct?
Yeah, this was, as Sam said, we had multiple different iterations and then with each concept, those also had iterations. So, just to give you an idea, we looked at, you can see this channel here, we tried to keep it on one property. We looked at what, is there a way to lessen the burden and straddle the property line? So we looked at a lot of those. At first, this was the preferred option until we started looking more of the details of not just the bottom line, what is the cost? County versus city limits, closures to 180, that's huge, reducing those closures. So, yeah, I would say option one was preferred at one point.
And can you just orient me with option two? Is that not 180 as well?
Yes, yes. So, option one comes off through this side here. And then option two, we would do some channel grading to kind of reroute that channel and get a more straight shot through the Lutheran Church parcel.
Okay. You know, I'll take the team's word and the engineer's word in terms of what's the best approach and what option makes most sense, but if there is complexities that, you know, Mayor and councilmembers can help out with, in terms of meeting with landowners, I'm not too sure what would be supportive here, but if there's anything we can do, if option one were the better option, you know, let us know if there's something we can do to help. But if you all decide option two's the best approach, I fully support whichever one we choose. Thank you.
One other thing that was just pointed out with option two, we have the ability to, I don't want to get too technical here, but we can pull this outlet of the box culvert a little bit further from the wash, which kind of lets that water to spread out, slow down. As we're all seeing from the flooding in this area, getting water to turn 90 degrees isn't ideal. So if we can get that water slowed down and allow it to turn, you'll see on the other side of the wash, we have this other, we're calling it a wall right now, we'll see in final design, but that's to armor that slope from, you know, getting hit with those floodwaters.
And that leads me to my last question that I forgot a second ago, but what is the impact to the Rio de Flag and downstream? Can you walk us through what that might look like, channeling this much water down it?
Sure. So, that kind of goes back to, it is one overall watershed, but you have different tributaries. So, the likelihood, the likelihood that this tributary contributing to Schultz Creek flooding, flash flooding at the same time as the main Rio de Flag channel, it's pretty low. It's possible, I have to say that, emphasize that it is possible. But in the models that J E Fuller is working on, I don't know if Joe's on, but when it's just Schultz Creek flooding, this is able to stay within the channel, the Rio de Flag channel.
Excellent. Any other questions on this bit before we continue? Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions. First of all, thank you for the very informative presentation. For option two, it says, option provides no adverse impact to downstream properties. And that's kind of spelled out in the matrix with the color-coded. And it did not say so on option one. So, does it mean that option one will likely have adverse impact to downstream properties?
So what that means with adverse impacts in any stormwater drainage design, that's what we're looking for and that's kind of what's happening on the museum with that modeling of, we're modeling all of these projects to make sure that there's no unintended consequences. So for example, we're putting all that water into the Killup Detention Basin. If that overflows, where does it go? And does it send more water somewhere where it's not supposed to go? So with this option two, what happens when this culvert gets overwhelmed? There's two things happening. It overtops on a Highway 180 and until it reaches a large enough storm event, most of it will stay on this east side of Highway 180 and continue south and then it'll start overtopping 180. Second thing that's happening is as this infrastructure goes downstream, there's a catch basin structure, we've been calling it the bubbler, that that gets overwhelmed and it starts bubbling back to the surface. So that's what a lot of our problems we've been seeing. So with this option two, I would say both options on the adverse impact, it still will overtop onto 180 and on certain storm events will flow over 180. What we can do with option two is we can choke down. And when I say choke down, we analyze what that downstream infrastructure can convey and we choke down this existing box culvert to where no more than what that downstream infrastructure can handle. So that's what that means by no adverse impact.
Thank you for that clarity. Follow-up. In your presentation, you mentioned option two, of course, has less impact on utility and impacted traffic and Highway 180 closure during construction. And it said, you mentioned completely underground on 180, that's option two. Is option one above ground?
So, option one is underground, under 180, and then it goes, transitions to an open channel on this stretch here. So it'll be on the same box size box culvert to 8-by-5s under 180, except option one transitions to an open channel, whereas option two, you can see it stays in a box culvert the whole way.
Straight shot indeed. So I understand option two will likely be more expensive, but less impacted to private property and it's all within city limits. Option one will probably be cheaper, but has more impact with multiple property owners. And of course, it's the diagonal design. So, in your interaction and meetings with ADOT engineers, do they specify a specific preference which option?
They're supportive of both options. They do like option two from impact perspective. Another thing I'd like to point out on option one here is this area here between the fire station and Grand Canyon Trust. If you go walk around, you can see there's a overhead electric pole here where it goes underground and we're assuming this is what feeds multiple properties. So, we're not 100% sure what's in that area. So, if we can stay out of that area, that'd be beneficial. That's not to say we won't encounter anything on option two.
Has there any discussion about funding with ADOT?
So, we have done preliminary cost estimates for these two options and we've split it into costs within the ADOT right-of-way versus outside right-of-way. It's my understanding they're pursuing funding. Sam might be able to speak to that.
So, ADOT's looking at all options at this point. They had looked at some at their emergency funding, however, because there was no damage to Highway 180, it wasn't eligible for their emergency funding like we saw out on Highway 89. However, they're still looking at all the viable options that they might have to help support this project. It was just tougher because they didn't have that eligibility because there was no technical damage to the road. But again, they've been great partners so far, they've been at the table through the design process and really trying to figure out how do we work together to get this impact reduced. For them, this is one of their main arterials, heading north out of town, getting up towards the Grand Canyon. So any kind of closure that we have here, and we had several this summer, are extremely impactful for them and it's important that we get that water conveyed under the roadway.
Thank you so much. May I just offer a comment, Mr. Mayor, just I'm here to be the, and I brought this up already to the State Transportation Board and ADOT Director Holikowski, so I'll be making noise, in a nice way, to our partners with ADOT about prioritizing funding for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we can proceed with the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Stephen. Appreciate it. And again, as we worked with the museum side of the house, we're working with the pipeline side of the house with residents to help them gain access back into their properties through the winter time, with that understanding that there's always a risk potential. We've seen it a couple of times where we have what we call a rain-on-snow event that could create some issues. So everybody says, well, it's winter time, we don't get funding in the winter time. Not necessarily, and I think most of you probably have seen those impacts. So, we have been working with residents. Actually, today they went out and removed 40 pallets of resident-filled pallets of sandbags today off of Stavano Way to help those residents out and we were able to reuse some of those sandbags and help with next year's preparation efforts. But again, anybody who's in need of support or needs pallets so they can remove their own sandbags, we encourage them to call our call line. Same thing with concrete barrier removal and then all of this really lines up for our winter preparations and understanding what does that look like and how is snow going to impact some of these areas. With this one here, one of the more important updates, I'll hand it over to Brandy, who has been our finance section chief on our IMT this year and just been phenomenal. So I want to thank her for all of her work and let her update.
Thank you, Sam. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Brandy Suda, serving as your city's finance director. So this next dive just provides a brief cost update related to Pipeline West. So, since our last presentation, there's been no change to the preseason mitigation costs related to both museum and pipeline at $471,000. The cost estimate related to flood response has been updated to $351,000 based on our latest projections now that the monsoon season is coming to an end. Also, there is no update or change related to the estimate for private damage at $95,500. The water control facility cost estimate has been updated to $15.2 million, which includes the inter-basin water line, the Rio Channel, Highway 180 culvert, as well as Francis Short Pond. We anticipate DEMA funding for the inter-basin, the Rio Channel, as well as Francis Short Pond and the city. Working with ADOT is working on identifying funding or finding funding for the Highway 180 culvert. And then lastly, we have no change on the grant match or design costs related to the Schultz Creek Basin project and the related Natural Resource Conservation Service Emergency Watershed Protection Grant. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brandy. And good evening, Mayor and Council, Sarah Langley, Public Affairs Director. Wanted to take a minute tonight to touch- Wanted to take a minute tonight to touch on the Small Business Administration loans that are available to residents and on our communications efforts as well. So the SBA loans, hopefully everyone is aware of these by now. But for those in the Pipeline West area specifically, there are low interest loans from the federal government available, not only to businesses, as you might think, it being an SBA program, but it's also available to homeowners and to renters. And so there is loan money available for if your home was damaged or if your personal property was damaged inside or outside of your home because of flooding during July 23rd through August 28th of this year. So we've been working closely with the SBA's Public Information Officer, Louise Porter, who was actually physically stationed in Flagstaff up until the end of last week to, you know, meet with residents and help get the word out. Jointly with the SBA and with the Flood Control District, we've done a lot of social media as well as news releases and e-newsletters. We also sent a physical flyer to everyone in the Pipeline West area. You can see that there on the screen in both English and Spanish. So main message is November 18th is the deadline for residents to apply for a physical damage loan. So if residents are listening and they're maybe interested in learning more, we encourage them to reach out to the SBA and that website link is on the slide. And then for our communications efforts, of course, they continue outside of monsoon season. We continue to send out our e-newsletters and respond to, to, you know, inquiries from residents weekly. Just as a reminder for anyone in the museum flood area who may be listening, they can visit museumfloodprojects.com to sign up for our e-newsletter and learn more about all of the different mitigation projects going on in the area. And then for Pipeline West, just wanted to highlight, we do have a community meeting coming up. October 24th, I think that's two Mondays from now, 6:00 PM right here in City Hall. And that'll be a joint meeting with both city and flood control district staff, as well as the, the different engineering firms that are contracted. That meeting will focus on the different long-term mitigation plans that we have. And then of course, just another reminder for residents in the Pipeline West area, they can go to flagstaff.AZ.gov/pipelinewest for more information. So that's our last slide. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you for any questions.
Thank you. We do have a public participant. So I would like to call Steve Perk and then we can have any further discussion from council.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm back. So yay on the basins. Nice job. Okay. Yay on pallets. Me and three of my neighbors have built six walls at our expense. We're not looking to get reimbursed. We're trying to protect ourselves. We'd appreciate it if we get more than one to visit to pick up pallets a week, as the street guy said and did do. Now we have over 20 pallets on the street and six neighbors looking to get rid of some sandbags. So we appreciate the help. Obviously, we're running short on time before November 1st. Thank you. Now, my wife and I and another neighbor volunteered to let water go through our property this summer. It's not going to do it again. As I mentioned, we built a wall. And my neighbor built a wall. But we're coming here and I've come numerous times. I sent an email out to council, got no response September 8th. And we're trying to protect the people behind us and the people down in Coconino. As Steve mentioned, the bubbler's a main issue. And that's your code violation, which I'm sorry, I was wrong. It's not 16 years. The senior county engineer corrected me. It's 30 years you've been in violation with the county at that bubbler. And now it came to rest that it causes a good deal of flooding, not on Stavano Way this past summer, but those apartments. Nine out of 15 apartment people had their homes flooded. Only two of us on Stavano Way did. But when I'm here looking for reimbursement, we're looking here for you to solve and fix your violation. I contacted the city by code violation on September 22nd. That's been buried. I'm hearing crickets, much like the communication with the council. This is your bubbler. This is your violation. You know, known about it for over 16 years. 16 years ago, we've got the paperwork of your, the meeting from the planning commission and they were going to do something about it. And now you're crickets. I, I hope some leadership will show up. If not, I hope there's some change in leadership in this coming election. Thank you.
Yes, Steve Perk. I'd, I'd like to respond. You know, I wasn't here 16 years ago. Nobody on council was. And sometimes it does take catastrophic events for us to recognize that problems exist. In this case, somebody burning toilet paper that led to a catastrophic fire that led to water going through that bubbler that nobody could have, nobody was expecting before. But I'm hoping that through the presentation today, you see how much design, how much coordination is happening to try to correct the problem, to try to protect the neighborhoods, that we are figuring out every way possible to come up with over $5 million needed to protect this area and ensure that that water isn't coming out of the bubbler like it was before. And this does take a lot of work and a lot of work is being done and a lot of leadership, whether it be the engineers or those of us who are pushing for additional funding from the federal and state government to see this through. And again, I wasn't here 16 years ago and we are cleaning up a mess from something we could never have expected. A fire that burned over 22,000 acres.
I understand nobody expected that. And we bought a house, my wife bought a house in a flood zone. We understand that. Okay. And nobody expected this sequence of events. But we did bring this up. Steve mentions it, his engineers, your city engineers, Ed Schenk, we bring this up. He's not have this project to fix. It's not anywhere on your projects to fix the bubbler. Okay? You've got the money. You've got access to a drainage directly to the Rio behind three of my neighbor's house. You have the option. I've seen your financials. I'm a financial expert. You've had tons of money that you could spend. It will take less than a couple of million dollars. I'm not an engineer. I'm not sure what it's going to cost. But I know, I know how to read your financial statements. You've got the money to fund this. And you, it's not in any of your projects. You're here now and you haven't answered me. You haven't answered my neighbors. You haven't answered the poor people in the apartments who don't have a voice.
I'd like to state that the design one option that was presented tonight was what you had been suggesting. But that is going to take a lot of property acquisition.
That doesn't touch the bubbler, does it, Steve? The, option one does not touch the bubbler, does it?
The easement that you're speaking to right now. That is part of the easement, but that's, that easement is not large enough to channel that much.
I understand. I understand. This is not about solving the flooding problem. And he has to go through, and I'm great flood option two. But I also know, and you know, that stormwater was put up on the stormwater people to do that in 25. This is a, this is something that needs to be done regardless. This isn't solving the problem. I never presented it that. This is your code violation that is causing part of the flooding, not part of the whole solution. Mind you, the basin, his long-term project, and just fix the bubbler. You're out of code violation. You can't go from large to small anywhere in this country for over 100 years.
Thank you, Stephen. Councilmember Schmuck.
Hi, Stephen. Good afternoon. Thank you for being with us. I really appreciate you taking the time to speak to us. I just wanted to mention, I did read your emails and I didn't, I did not respond because, I believe because of legal concerns, I think we've been, you know, it's, it's a sensitive line. And I just wanted to mention that I'm happy to set a meeting with you. And if you stick around, like we can talk and set up, I'll give you my contact information and we can work through this. At a recent budget retreat, I did ask staff, I believe it was Gary Miller with our team, if this was being addressed. And I think he said yes. But is there anyone from staff that might be able to speak to what he was referencing? Or was it basically what we're talking about? Was this the options or two options? So Stephen, I just want to say thank you for being here and that I'd love to chat with you more and set some one-on-ones and, and, and see what we can do to, to find the right approach. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is that the only public participant online? All right. Thank you. With that, do we have any further discussion or questions on this agenda item? I'm not seeing any at this time. So at this point, I think it'd be a good time for a break. Councilman McCarthy agrees. Let's be back at five, it's 5:04 now. Let's start back at 5:20. All right, we are back at it for our short-term rental legislation update, our agenda item number nine. Ms. Langley.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So back again with a different topic. Today, we have a team from a lot of different city divisions to talk to you and give an update about short-term rentals and the current situation here in Flagstaff. So the purpose of the meeting tonight, first, we're going to kind of take a deep look at STRs in Flagstaff. We'll let you know kind of how many we currently have and where they are in the city. And then most importantly, how we currently regulate them. Then we will discuss a new piece of legislation that passed at the state legislature this spring, Senate Bill 1168, which gives cities some additional tools to regulate STRs. And then we will close by asking for your direction on how you'd like to move forward, given the new legislation. So to get started, short-term rentals are basically non-residential units that are rented out for less than 30 days. So 30 days is really kind of the determining cutoff for short-term, short first, long-term rentals. And as you can see on here, they can be a lot of different things. They can be single-family homes, apartments, they can be rooms in an owner-occupied home or other things. And then kind of looking at the legislative situation. So the Arizona Legislature has given this topic quite a bit of attention in recent years. The landscape really shifted back in 2016 when Senate Bill 1350 was passed. That bill basically barred cities and other political jurisdictions from prohibiting or restricting short-term rentals based on their classification or how they were used or occupied. But cities did retain the ability to very narrowly regulate health and safety issues. So after that bill went into effect, many cities and counties had to repeal existing ordinances that they had in place. And then three years later, in 2019, another short-term rentals bill, House Bill 2672, was passed. And that was in response to a lot of complaints from cities and a lot of complaints from residents who were being impacted by short-term rentals in their neighborhoods. So 2672 introduced a new provision to allow municipalities to require the owner of short-term rentals to provide a contact, contact information. That way, there could be someone to respond in the case of complaints. And it also outlined some penalties for verified violations. But cities were still very limited in how they could regulate short-term rentals. So coming to the current day, earlier this year, Senate Bill 1168 passed as a compromise between municipalities and the short-term rentals industry. And in a couple of slides, Anya is going to go into detail about what this bill entails. But just some key features are that it allows governments to establish a regulatory license or a permit in order to operate a short-term rental within city limits. And it importantly outlines the allowable criteria for when a government can deny or revoke that permit. There's a very specific criteria for when you can do that, if you do choose to have a license. And then it also features other regulations such as expanded requirements for contact information and some regulations related to special events. So overall, the bill does provide some more regulatory tools for cities. But it is important to note that it does not allow cities to limit the number of short-term rentals in a community or in a specific neighborhood. So it unfortunately does not address the issue of proliferation or the impact of short-term rentals on the housing stock. So with that, I will pass it over to Jessica Huliot to talk about short-term rentals in Flagstaff. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Jessica Huliot, I'm your customer service manager. And our team handles the registration of emergency contact information for identified short-term rentals. So the slide on screen that you're looking at is a visual representation of the identified advertisements for short-term rentals in Flagstaff. As you can see, most are in single-family residential neighborhoods. And currently, we have 887 unique properties identified. Of this, 636 are registered with us. And this represents about 2.8% of all residential units. In comparison, we've learned that Valley Cities average about 1% to 2% of residential units. And our neighbors to the south in Sedona is closer to 10%. There, next slide. So we launched our registration process coinciding with the city ordinance in January of 2021. So it's been going on about two years. The short-term rental properties are identified through our third-party vendor, which is called Lodging Revs. It does cost us about $25,000 annually for the software. What the software does is it reviews these online listing websites to identify any new advertisements. Our team then sends a letter to the owners and requesting them to provide their emergency contact information. And we do this on a monthly basis. And then also each November, we send reminders to those owners so that they can get in and update any contact information into the system. And we have initiated conversation with our vendor and the system could be converted to a licensing system, should we receive that direction. I'll now pass it on to Anya, who's going to discuss the current regulations.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Here to talk about, first, I'll introduce you to the city's current regulations. They became effective in January of 2021. They're located in our city code, Chapter 312. They parallel the state law as it was before it was amended this year. It requires the annual registration, which is free. And again, the owner of the short-term rental has to provide emergency contact information. Unlawful uses of short-term rentals are prohibited. And I'll set that out in the next slide. The owner has to comply with all of our city codes, building code, litter, noise, trash ordinances. We also require that a notice be posted in each short-term rental listing the unlawful uses or uses that are not allowed. And we also have a provision in our code that requires that any advertisement for a short-term rental include the transaction privilege taxes license number for that rental so we can collect local taxes from the gross revenue. Finally, we have some civil penalties and the city's civil penalty is set at 500. All right, I do need help. Thank you. I need to change the slide. All right. So here's, here's what you can't do in a short-term rental, any non-residential use. You can't have a special event that would otherwise require a permit. You can't have retail, restaurants, banquet space, or other similar use, which is not really defined. Other uses that are prohibited are housing sex offenders, operating or maintaining a sober living home, selling illegal drugs, liquor control, or pornography, obscenity, nude or topless dancing. And yeah. So now we have Reggie to talk to you about code compliance.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor. Mine's going to be very brief. So, thank you.
Mine's going to be very brief, so, thank you. The way we receive complaints in code compliance is there is the online, online incident reporting form, so citizens can go to the Lodging Revs forum and do an online complaint. They can also call a hotline. The hotline will then alert us, they'll send an email to my office, and we'll have any complaint that comes in through the hotline system. The number of complaints that we basically received in the last fiscal year was, you know, through the system, it was about 40, you know, give or take a few complaints. But I also received phone calls and emails to the tune of 20 to 25 during that fiscal year. So since we've had the software, we've probably averaged around 50 to 60 complaints a year in those two years, so stays right around the same. The majority of the complaints are listed, they're noise complaints, litter complaints, occupancy complaints, party complaints, parking issues. Unfortunately, most of the parking issues end up going to PD because they're not parked all over the property, they're parked on the street. And so, they're taking up space in the street, and people don't understand that it is legal to park on the street. So those are the majority of the complaints we get. We do work with the property owners as well as the residents when we do receive a complaint. The majority of the time, if we're able to get there after we receive the complaint, get to the property while the residents are still there, then we can address the problem right away. If not, we have to try to track down the property owner and notify them, and by then, usually, the problem's been rectified anyway. So it's kind of a fine line on whether we actually get there and there's an active violation taking place. We also work closely with PD. PD does most of the noise complaints because obviously, those are usually after hours. We're not here, so we always recommend that they call PD. PD does show up and they address those noise issues. So that's basically what we do in the code compliance department, dealing with all these complaints.
A quick question. So of these about 60 or so complaints a year, how many are, you know, the same properties? So as we're looking at this multi-vibration, tiered violation, is this pretty proliferate or is it very concentrated?
It's pretty concentrated. It's not, it's not a lot of the same properties, believe it or not. There have been occasionally where it's the same property, but it's new residents and new tenants. They may, say, on a Saturday night, they get a group that stays until Tuesday. Then, the same property might have a new group of residents to come in on Friday and stay until Sunday. Those, but, but those are the complaints, the ones like that are mostly noise because of the, you know, people having a good time late in the evening, disturbing neighbors. But we haven't had a proliferation of the same property being complained about time and time again.
Okay, thank you. Good to know. Councilmember Schimoni, I believe, has a question as well.
Yeah, Reggie, don't go away too quickly. Thank you, Mayor. Quick question for you, Reggie. So given the new law that we're looking at, this new opportunity, you, with the new regulations that the state has granted us the ability to regulate, of the complaints you've seen, whether this is past year, last five years, would you say five of them qualify for, you know, violation causes, zero? Like, it sounds like it's going to be a very small number. Is, am I understanding that correctly? Is that true, is that true through your perspective?
That is. Again, we, we get the complaints, but a lot of times, the complaints aren't actual violations. And so, that's, that's part of the thing that we have to determine and distinguish between that. So we may get a call on the same property, but then, there's no active, actual violation when we, when we arrive.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Reggie.
So talking about what, where short-term rentals fall in the zoning code, short-term rentals aren't actually defined in the zoning code, and they're not regulated by the zoning code. So really, with the current statutes as they are, short-term rentals are allowed in all zones where residential units exist. And we have residential units that go through all of the zoning categories. We have legal non-conforming residential units and industrial zones. So anywhere that there is a legal, and I will say legal, residential unit, because every once in a while, a short-term rental pops up in something that maybe we don't consider to be a legally residential unit, those are allowed by rate. All of, so the use, short-term rental is not a listed use in the zoning code. It's what rental, it's what residential unit is permitted. So most instances, you've seen that they're single-family residential, so that's the use that falls under the code. So when we do regulations in terms of if there's something you want to apply to short-term rental, you're going to end up applying it to all of those residential units in that category. For example, all residential, single-family units. So short-term rentals are allowed, so there's, in our zoning code right now, it does say that we don't allow the rental of accessory dwelling units for less than 30 days. That's just a cleanup that hasn't been completed in the zoning code. We're not actually allowed to regulate the short-term rental of accessory dwelling units. But we got a little smart. So right now, when you have a single-family home and you're allowed an accessory dwelling unit, the code was originally written that you, it was intended so that you could rent out the accessory dwelling unit. And the way the code is actually written is you could rent out either, you could rent out the primary structure and live in the ADU, or you could rent out the ADU and live in the primary structure. But it was never intended that you rented both units, because that's really more of a duplex, right, or going towards multifamily. So with the last round of amendments that was made to short-term rentals, we included another provision, and it's built an incentive to not have short-term rentals and accessory dwelling units, because we do know that can be an issue. So there are options. You can go the route of you live in one and you rent one, or if you would like to rent both units, because we do know that we have an issue with our housing inventory, as long as you commit that neither of them will be short-term rentals, you can rent both of them. So it's a little bit of an incentive to try to limit short-term rentals where we can and try to keep long-term rentals on the market. One of the other things that you'll be hearing about in terms of short-term rentals, oh, sorry.
Yeah, Councilman McCarthy.
Well, maybe I'm not paying attention, but that didn't make any sense. I thought that we could not control if someone rents their property out as a short-term rental. So if they have a house, they can rent it out as a short-term rental. If they have an ADU, they can rent it out as a short-term rental. Am I wrong?
So the way that the ADU provision has been since its inception is that only one of the units could be rented, that one of the units...
Isn't that in conflict to the state law?
No. One of the units had to be owner-occupied. Accessory dwelling units are provided an incentive. They are limited in size and square footage. We exempt them from getting a separate water meter, so they're tied to the principal dwelling. So only one of the units can be rented, whether long-term or short-term.
And that's not a conflict with the state law, I take it? That's what you're telling me?
Correct. That is how the code was originally written. It's how many accessory dwelling unit codes are written. Our covenant is recorded at the time that the accessory dwelling unit is established, and that covenant then carries on on all future title reports. And it details, it's restricted that only one unit could be rented. So this next time around, we just got creative. Okay, we'll let you rent both units, but neither can be short-term. So you have a choice. If you would like to do a short-term rental, you can only rent one. If you can commit to long-term rental, we'll let you rent both.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So in addition to the recent statute, there are, there's terminology and discussion about special events and events that happen within these properties. So sometimes, the property, a short-term, a single-family home, a short-term rental, is rented for the purpose of having a wedding or a party, or, I don't know, there's a whole laundry list of events that occur within these properties. Right now, the only way we regulate special events on residential properties is through our temporary use permit process. So the temporary use permit process does allow for special events in all kinds of zoning districts, and there are set processes that goes, that these go through. The one thing that's kind of a little interesting about our zoning code is we don't actually have a use, even in our commercial zones, for an event center, a conference center. The use that we have that comes closest is a neighborhood meeting facility, which you can see works but doesn't work, and it's got a fairly old definition. It still talks about being like a Grange Hall. These are old terminologies, probably could use a little update and a refresh, and maybe change that definition. At one point in time, we also included religious institutions under neighborhood meeting locations. It was a way to try to not call out churches and religious institutions separately. We, because of certain state legislation that's also been adopted in regards to religious institutions, we've now called them back out as a separate use as well. So that neighborhood meeting facility use could probably be updated as well. And the city, just as a note, that the city can't require developers to provide CCNRs that prohibit short-term rentals. We do know that communities can, through their HOAs, create restrictions on short-term rentals. There are some, there's a historic neighborhood in Phoenix, I believe, that's gone through and created a new HOA just for this purpose of regulating or prohibiting short-term rentals. We do often work with developers. It is something we discuss with them, especially when they're going through the rezoning process. If in a development agreement, they might be interested in removing short-term rentals as a possibility, and we've had several developers who have done that, and there are several subdivisions already that, that have done it or have tried to change their CCNRs to do such a thing. And with that, I'll hand it over back to Anya.
Yeah, thank you, Tiffany. That was great to, to clarify that our zoning doesn't regulate short-term rentals. It's just our city code, which conforms with law. So the big question is, what, what are you allowed to do now under, under the new law, which went into effect in September? The most primary change is that we're allowed to require a license for short-term rental versus just plain registration. We can also require payment of a license fee of up to $250, which would help cover some of our administrative costs for, for keeping track of these and code compliance. Again, we're allowed to request emergency contact information. For some reason, the legislature felt like we need to check with our public safety personnel first. If we, if we want to ask for emergency contact information, we're happy to do that. And we can charge up to $1,000 civil penalty if the owner fails to provide that emergency contact information within 30 days after we've asked for it. It's now required to show that the owner has a transaction privilege tax license, which is a good change. And this is one of my favorite clauses, the owner, you can require the owner to agree to comply with all laws. So if the city gives direction, or you, the council gives direction, that you want to have a licensing system, and we adopt that, any license needs to be issued or denied within seven business days. There is a reference to the statute ARS 9-835. Our city already complies with that for all our other kinds of licensing provisions. It just says you have to provide strict timelines for completing administrative review. So the legislation also provides grounds for denial of a license. Those include failure to provide information, providing false information, you didn't pay the license fee, your license has been previously suspended, or the owner is a registered sex offender, or convicted of criminal act that resulted in, sorry, I'm just going to read this, in death or serious injury or use of a deadly weapon in the last five years. So if, if you wanted to do background checks, that would be a city expense, and the city would need to do that. All right. Oh, I figured out how to move the pages along. So another change that cities would be allowed to require the owner to notify their neighbors that there's a short-term rental. I think most neighbors do know when there's a short-term rental next to them, but the city could require the owner to provide notice along with the emergency contact information. And that might be helpful for, for neighbors to have. So that's a new change. The law also discusses advertisements, background, other kinds of background checks and insurance. So now, all ads do need to list the transaction privilege tax license number, which we had already decided to require previously, so that's already required. Then, the city may now require ads to list our local short-term rental license number. We can require sexual offender background checks on the booking guest, and the owner would need to perform that at his expense, but the booking guest is not necessarily who ends up staying at the short-term rental, right? So I don't know how much weight, if the city would want to require that, but that, that is an option the city could consider. In addition, the city may require at least $500,000 in liability insurance for the owner of a short-term rental, and I believe the Airbnb and VRBO platforms do have a similar requirement like that already, is what I've been told. So I want to talk now about violations, because of, violations are where you would have the opportunity to either impose a civil penalty or to suspend a license. So the statute defines the violation as a verified violation, which means a final decision, adjudication of guilt, which would be in court, or civil responsibility, which could be through administrative hearing process, after all the appeals are exhausted, so it's final. It does not mean a code citation, it doesn't mean when, when our code compliance officer goes out there and sees a code violation, gives a citation. That would not be it. There would need to be a, a process that it went through, and then, it was a final decision. So, I mean, if the, if the owner said, yes, I admit that was a code violation, that could be possibly a final adjudication, but otherwise, there is an appeals process that would need to run through that. This is a good one. The city's no longer required to notice, notify the Arizona Department of Revenue if we've had a verified violation on the property. So here, the state legislature decided what penalties we could charge for violations, and each of these have to occur within one year. So it's $500 for first violation, up to $1,000 for two violations, $3,500 for three violations within a year. And then, they said, or you could charge whatever the higher amount is, if it's one-night rent, two nights' rent, or three nights' rent. I guess in Paradise Valley and places like that, they can have some pretty expensive rent, and so they felt like this was an incentive to make sure that violations didn't occur. However, is the loophole, if there are multiple violations arising from one response, like the police comes out and he's like, oh, I see all these violations, one, two, three, four, five, that only counts as one, one violation for the, for purposes of penalties and license suspensions. So kind of convoluted system here, but this is, this is the law. And, and here, listing out the grounds for license suspension, they're very limited. There need to be three verified violations within one year, and they can't be related to anything aesthetic, trash, litter, parking, or anything like that. They have to be a, a serious threat to public health or safety has had to occur. They have to be a serious threat to public health or safety has had to occur. Or, they will allow you to suspend the license if the owner has done something really bad, like he's committed a felony in or near the short-term rental. He's, his conduct has allowed a serious physical injury or wrongful death at a short-term rental. Or, he's knowingly allowed a sex offender, all those sex-related activities to occur, or first over living home. Or, the owner has knowingly allowed a special event that would otherwise require permit to occur on the present premises, or allowed a retail, restaurant banquet space or similar use. In other words, he's allowed, or he or she, or it, owner could be an it, has allowed unlawful use to occur at the premises knowingly. You got all that? I know, that's a lot, right? Okay. Okay, I'm gonna turn this slide back to Tiffany. Thank you.
All right. So, we, as a group, talked a lot about what we could actually do within the zoning code. We were all really excited that maybe this legislative round that we got back some ability to regulate short-term rentals through the zoning code, there's not a lot. But, one of the things that we could do within the zoning code to assist with the city code sections that we already have would be to define what a special event would be in a residential zone. So, you know, it's not uncommon for somebody to have a large party or for somebody to have a wedding at their house. It is more uncommon if somebody was having a wedding at their house every weekend on a regular basis, right? And, you know, a one-time event is nothing. When you're a neighbor, you have a party, you go over and say, hey, we're having a party, come on over. That doesn't necessarily always happen with a short-term rental type situation. I just barge over and go to their event anyway, I'm kidding. So, we could look at defining special events. We could regulate them through temporary use permits. Special events could be an event where an admission is charged. I mean, certainly, this is something that's happened, especially at maybe, I don't want to call out any particular use, but maybe a party where a cover fee is charged to attend, because maybe a band's playing or something along those lines. It has happened. A special event could also be with a certain number of people. Not the easiest thing to regulate. We don't really get, you know, we're not the police department. We're code compliance. And it's not as if we could really go to the event and count the number of people. I mean, it would have to be a number where it would be easy to eyeball from a distance how many people were in attendance. And it's important to remember that whatever restriction we do apply would apply to all residential properties. So, wouldn't just be the short-term rentals. These restrictions then would also apply to everybody's houses. So, you know, we are, you know, are there, is there the occasional time when somebody comes in and gets a temporary use permit for a wedding? There is. It's very rare. We're not pretty heavy-handed with those temporary use permits in terms of the events that people have at their residential homes. But, you could see how, over time, a series of events could become draining on a neighborhood. We could also require a permit for special events in the residential zones. So, use of a short-term residential, use of a short-term rental for a special event, which would otherwise require a permit, is unlawful. So, we could come up with some other very different permit, not the temporary use permit. And the next one is, is we could actually prohibit special events in residential zones in conjunction with the new definition. So, if we came up with an event center, something that was permitted by right in commercial zones, and was clearly not permitted within a short-term rental. So, if a short-term rental was being used in a way that it would meet the definition of that event center, then we could also find a clear violation in that regard. So, that could be helpful. So, these are the things along the special, they're all along the special event line that we can do in terms of residential uses. I know that there are other concerns along the way, like parking and not out of the zoning code. Parking is, well, but just remember, we can't set special parking requirements for short-term rentals. We'd have to set them for all residential units, and that's where it gets tough. So, if you have any questions about what we can, or do, or don't want to do with the zoning code, let me know, and we'll get working on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Shumani.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment as we do move forward on this topic, just to keep enforcement in mind, which I know we are, but when we present to council, maybe just always through the lines of enforcement, if this is additional work, if it's less work, same. I just want to keep our limited enforcement abilities in mind. Thank you.
Well stated, Councilmember Shumani.
So, Dan, can you talk a little bit about the Coconino County, what they're kind of planning on their end, and how we can coordinate?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor Dan Folt, Community Development Director. So, I'm not sure if they've had a public discussion yet with the full board, but I was in a meeting this morning with two board members and some staff. And I think they're, what they are talking about, I believe, is some kind of an administrative permit. They don't do business licensing evidently in Coconino County. We would probably call it a license. They may call it a permit. That's one of those questions up there. But, I think they are talking about keeping it out as an administrative permit, and then very similar to what was outlined today. But, I don't believe they've actually made any proposal for a formal registration program or anything. But, I think it's similar to what our staff has been talking about. Is that helpful?
Somewhat. I guess since they haven't gone public, it might be hard to discuss, but I just urge council in future discussions that we coordinate with the county so that, you know, if one house on one side of the street is violating something, they have the same consequences as the house on the city side.
Yeah, thank you for that. I mean, that is one thing, I think for sure. It would be helpful if both jurisdictions had very similar requirements so that there's uniformity, and we've added that as a discussion point. There's a lot of reasons that makes sense, not only for our residents, but for the folks who are renting these properties and everybody involved. And there won't be, should be less confusion if we have the same requirements.
On that note, I will just say, though, that the county itself has less of an issue with this situation than we do. So, as we coordinate, it's not a matter of, let's just follow what the county does. We need to show leadership in dealing with this situation rather than relying on what they're gonna do. So, let's coordinate in good faith. But, as we're, as the city limits is facing a lot more issues than, for example, I don't know, Williams, then we should defer to our own judgment as well. With that, I do have a few points, but I'll turn it over to Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm curious to find out what other cities and towns in the state are mulling over, or have already implemented, and have adopted and implemented so far.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Salas. So, the League of Arizona Cities and Towns formed a working group to come up with a model form of short-term rental ordinance. That's done, and it's available. And that's something we could look at if we receive direction to amend our city code, to move away from the registration system that we have right now to more of a licensing system. So, we, there is a model form of ordinance out there. It's my understanding that Goodyear and Mesa have already adopted ordinances that will go into effect January 1st of 2023. And I believe Scottsdale may have adopted theirs as well, also to go into effect in January. The other cities are still, you know, working, working towards. Working through, I don't know if they'll actually adopt ordinances or not, but I think most cities will.
So, don't know all.
Yeah.
So, do you have an idea of the kind of the salient points of the ordinances that have been adopted or working through?
Basically, I think cities are trying to regulate to the extent they can some of the penalty clauses, which are more complex. I did notice in Mesa's ordinance, they just said it, 1,000, 2,000, or 3,000. They don't want to figure out what's one night's rent, or two nights' rent, or... That's just like, there goes to Councilmember Shumani's comment about trying to simplify enforcement, but...
Hold on, City Manager, do you have, do you want to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the question, Councilmember Salas. I know your question was focused on the state of Arizona, but I'd like to share what I have seen in Colorado, which is no different in terms of the, dealing with the STR issues. It's a prevalent issue in many states, of course. In Colorado, just to, states with accuracy, there's much less preemption. So, the local governments were free to do a lot more to regulate. In fact, in some of the more extreme examples, there were caps placed on the number of STRs, zoning regulations, to restrict them, and so forth. So, even with that more relaxed environment for local government restriction, I don't mind sharing with you that what seemed to be a very successful model and prevalently used was that of licensing. In one community that I did serve, licensing was put into place after several months of discussion by the town council, and properly vetted through the many Realtor associations and lodging associations and so forth. So, the matter was a hot topic. Licensing was deemed to be an approach that would require minimal staffing resources, somewhat in response to Councilmember Shumani's comment about law enforcement. Except here, we're talking administrative staffing. I think we heard at the beginning of this presentation, and what an excellent presentation it was, that our current third-party provider, lodging REBs, can easily integrate a licensing administration into the product that they use to monitor our STRs. That is extremely convenient. If we can avoid having to hire staff people to oversee a new program, that's a, that's a big deal for the organization. So, I'm not here necessarily to advocate for licensing, but I think kind of in response to your question, at least in another state where this has been dealt with similarly to how it's being dealt with now in Arizona, licensing was deemed to be a model that had a lot of success to it, so, thanks.
Follow-up, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that edified information, Mr. City Manager. So, in your experience with other, with other state, did their ordinance or policy on short-term rentals require other, inspection? Like, fire inspection, ADA compliance inspection? I'm just thinking, because when you're, when you're operating even just like an eight-room motel, you have to go through fire inspection, building inspection, ADA compliance, health and safety with the county Health and Human Services Department. And then, if you're serving food, there's another, or breakfast, or, you know, like even just continental breakfast, there's another layer of inspection. So, were those iterated in the short-term rentals policies or slash ordinances?
Thank you for the question. They were very salient issues in all the jurisdictions. Probably topping the list was fire code compliance, for safety reasons, obviously. It was a topic of a lot of discussion in the jurisdiction that I was making reference to. And in the end, the council, after very thoughtful deliberation, decided not to allow or mandate, it's always allowed, but not to mandate onsite inspections. They can occur if there's enough complaints, and there are internal mechanisms by which those inspections can come about if there are true life safety concerns. But, that, really, the topic was, was it going to be a prerequisite to a license? And the council decided, no, they were not going to go that far with it. They did require that those seeking a license sign an affidavit saying that the property, to be subject to STRs, was in compliance with the codes. And that's as far as the council went with that. I don't even know if that could occur in Arizona. I don't know what the licensing requirements would be. I think the model ordinance that the league has is, would probably serve as a good template to what the cities and towns could do. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I support a licensing system. I think this is good, not just for the idea of any penalizations, but it helps us with our tax records and ensuring that we are getting the proper taxes from these. We're still not capturing 100% of the STRs that are happening in the city. And this provides an incentive for them to sign up and make sure that we are collecting the appropriate taxes, just like the lodging industry is doing for motels and hotels, as required to do. I do have one question regarding the licensing costs. It was said $250, is that annual or a one-time license?
Mayor DZ, thank you for that question. The statute is silent on how long the license term can be. However, there is a reference in there that a license can be denied after, if a license has been suspended. No license can only be suspended normally if there's three violations in a year. So, I think the general consensus is that a license is annual. And that is how the other cities to, Councilmember Salas's question is regulating, is that a license will be annual. So, if a license is annual, the license fee will be annual also. And, of course, whenever we adopt a license fee, we have to do the website notice. We have to have the data to support the license fee. But, of course, we can take into account code compliance time and the STR or lodging REBs software cost, which is like $25,000 a year, as well as other staff time.
Thank you. With that, I think that we should be having a licensing cost. We're already, I mean, we're dropping 25 grand a year just to track the situation, and in addition, enforcement costs, et cetera, for 60 entities a year. So, we should be able to, they should be paying for that unto that sector. In terms of the notifying emergency contact information to neighbors, or letting them know of short-term rentals, I think that's a good thing. Especially, being able to provide that contact information will allow us potentially for neighbors to address the situation without the need for code compliance or the police having to show up, potentially. In terms of the background checks for booking guests, I think that is unnecessary and easily averted by anyone who wants to get a friend to do it rather than themselves. Unnecessary time and expense for us to have to implement. The liability insurance, I say, yes, that should exist. If, for example, somebody is in city limits, having a bonfire during fire season and burns down their neighbor's house, yes, I think that they should have liability insurance in accordance with that. Civil penalties, I like the simplicity of not having to calculate the rent amount. Let's just do the straight penalty at the cap of what is already stated in the state law and League of Cities and Towns recommendations. And then, with the special event, I'm saying, no. I mean, we're, if we have to do this across the board, what are we gonna do, a cap of 25 and break up my kid's birthday party? I don't know. I don't think that's necessary when it's across the board. The only circumstance I'd be okay with it is if it is an admission, dollar amount admission, then that does seem like a special event. So, I would be willing to consider that if council members would like to put it in. But, I think that's also going to add a layer to added time for enforcement and calculating whether that's happening or not. And having to document, it's gonna probably get messy even if they are doing a clear admissions fee. So, I'm suggesting no new definition for special events. So... So hopefully, got all that, but yes to licenses, and I won't go through it again, I just went through it. Councilmember Shmoni.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and I, I'm right there with you, I think, on everything you said. And, you know, I was, when I was thinking about this, uh, Councilmember Salas, I was thinking about you and cost recovery, and, and making sure that this is set up to be a net zero cost recovery program. I was wondering if there was any regulations, Anya, in terms of like, what we can use that licensing fee to do? Is that flexible money that the city can use to pay for that STR software and whatnot?
Uh, Councilmember Shmoni, uh, all fees that the city charges have to be reasonably related to your costs of, of regulation. So if your costs of regulation include, um, having software, yes, the license fee could help pay for the software, the license fee could help pay for code compliance, the license fee could help pay for, I guess, the staff time on, on any kind of license suspension or hearing process. Um, I, I know one, um, if we didn't have our own hearing officer internally, and we hired someone, for instance, and there were costs related to that, and we could track that, we could show this is an additional cost that we build into our, our license fee.
Okay, thank you. I think Reggie can use a, uh, I won't even say it.
I've got a, a new, a new member to your team to help out. How about that?
You know, I, I do want to take a quick step back, counsel, and just say that I went to that housing committee meeting that, uh, and Councilmember McCarthy, you were there with the state, uh, committee that they had put together with the legislature. And when I commented about short-term rentals, I believe it was to my comment, they responded and said, well, did you see what we've just passed? Did you see the new regulation? And I was really hopeful that that was actually going to allow us some, some power here. I'm looking at Todd Medeska, our, our state lobbyist, and, and I'm very disappointed that this is really not hitting the mark at all, in my opinion. And I have a feeling that council agrees with me, because my issue is the quantity, and this does not address the quantity at all. So that needs to be part of our state communication, and I'm sure they'll hear it from a lot of the communities, because this is, this is really not doing a whole lot. You know, this is allowing us to license and then potentially add a few extra things, but it doesn't really go far. So Mayor, my comments are very much in line with yours, so I'm not going to re- reread them, but, um, let me see what else I can add to the conversation really quick. I think for the penalties, I, I also think it should be a straight amount, it shouldn't be something we generate. I'm not interested in addressing our special events and our temporary use permits. Um, and then, let's see. Yeah, I think we should move forward with the licensing. I think this would be good. And to City Manager's comments, thank you for sharing that. And I do wonder, you know, if there's a good model in Colorado that we can kind of compare and look at, you know, and see where that overlaps with the other communities in the state, and what we're able to do in, in generating and crafting this, uh, obviously through the lens of what we're, we're granted to do. But it'd be good to look at a community that's really thought this through, put time into it, has years of experience, and really is the model in Colorado, and I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you. I, I think while it was, uh, convenient to reference, you know, what happened in Colorado simply because of the, the question about licensing, I would stop short of recommending that we use it as a model here in Arizona. I, I think we need to follow, uh, our own state legislation and, and what the, the do's and don'ts are, and we have a league now that has produced a model ordinance, and that is probably a really good starting place for all this.
I fully agree. Um, I'm just thinking, you know, if there was council direction to start looking at events and whatnot, I would want to look at Colorado and see if that's something that they've done, because I personally don't think we should. But hopefully, the majority, I think, feels similarly. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Shmoni. We'll go Councilmember McCarthy, then Councilmember Aslan, and then Vice Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Well, Anya, I'm very glad to hear that there's now a law saying that we must follow the law. I got a, that was a good laugh there. All right, on a more serious tone, um, short-term rentals are basically hotels in residential areas. Now, I know that's not true under the zoning code, but it's definitely true under the spirit of the zoning code, and what zoning codes are meant to be. So I guess I have a question, and, uh, do they pay a tax on these rental fees, the same as you would if you were a hotel? In other words, that'd be the sales tax plus the 2% BBB?
Yes, and the, and the online lodging operator platform collects that tax.
All right, I'm glad to hear that, because that was going to be one of my recommendations. Um, and I also noted with interest Ms. Salas's comments about, you know, hotels are required to do meet ADA, healthcare, uh, health codes, et cetera. And, you know, this is really unfair competition, because the short-term rentals, they get out of all that stuff. So they're really competing unfairly with hotels and motels. Editorial comment. Um, as far as a annual license, I think we should require that, and the fees should be commensurate with what our actual costs are. Uh, as far as free registration, like we do now, I would say no. It should be under the license, and there should be a, a, a fee for it. I do think it's good that the neighbors get the contact information, uh, in case there is a problem, because sometimes it's easier for the neighbor to call the person than it is to call the police or code enforcement or whatever. Uh, just a quick note on special events. I was in college in the late 60s and early 70s, and we had a very common thing, and they were called house parties, or open houses. And what we would do is, we would go to a person's house, we'd go in their backyard, they'd set up a band. I mean, I'm talking a full-up rock and roll band, and everybody would party and dance in the backyard. Now, I don't think that goes on much now, but it could. So I just kind of mentioned that. I don't think we need to do anything now on special events, but, you know, if situations change, and they go back to the way they were while I was in college a long time ago, um, then we might reconsider that. Um, I don't think we need to do background checks. I think that's onerous and probably won't yield a lot of, uh, sorting out of bad problems anyway. Um, and insurance, uh, I agree with the mayor that we should require insurance. And we went over an awful lot tonight, I may have missed a couple, but if you have any questions, ask me. That's kind of where my head's at on this. Again, these are hotels in residential neighborhoods. I see that as a problem. I, I know that we can't do anything about that right now, but maybe in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. I, I do appreciate the comment about the Americans with Disabilities Act and, and access for disabled persons with disabilities to, to also, um, use short-term rentals, and I, I think maybe that would be something for, that could be taken up at the legislature and, um, considered. As far, I also wanted to ask for clarification from council members on the direction as to background checks. So there's two different kinds that could occur. One would be, the city does the background check on the owner of the short-term rental, and the other one would be, the owner does the sexual offender background check on the booking guest. So we don't need to have any background checks, but I just wanted to point out, there were two different kinds of background checks that are permitted. One on the owner, and then, that the city would have to do and pay for, or the one on the booking guest, which again, is not necessarily who ends up staying at the short-term rental, but that's something the city could require the owner to do.
I'll go back to the two councilmembers, and then we can.
Um, in my opinion, one guy, um, I don't think we need to do any background checks. However, I do think it would be a good idea if when someone's booking, that they, uh, are notified that no sexual offenders are allowed, blah, blah, and that they be notified of that, but that we don't go to the extra expense of, of actually checking it out. We'll take their word for it, in other words, in my opinion.
I'm going to backtrack to Shmoni here.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. So, yeah, I also am leaning towards no background checks at all. Uh, we don't do that with our TPT licensing, do we?
No.
Okay, so yeah, that, I don't think we need to do that here. Um, I'd be curious if they did that in Colorado, but it doesn't sound like we're even heading in that direction. And then, um, Councilmember McCarthy, I'm not too sure I fully understood your last part of your comments about being notified. Are you saying that, they're saying that you can't be a, um, a felon or whatever it is to rent the property as a short-term rental?
Well, I think that's what the law says. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I, I think we just need to notify the owners and the renters what, of what the law is, um, and then not go to the expense of actually verifying it. Take their word for it.
Thank you. Uh, I'm in agreement, as stated. Uh, Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Um, yeah, really interesting conversation, but I, I, Councilmember Shmoni took the wind out of my sails a little bit. I think, I, I think we're having the wrong conversation here. I, you know, it's, it's great to have this conversation. Um, it's agendized, so let's do it. Um, this stuff is happening at the legislature, uh, it's, it's important for us to weigh in. Um, but my approach to this is that we need to be, we, we need to have as soft a touch as possible. I'm, I'm not here to micromanage the Airbnb industry. I think they do a good enough job of that on their own. And the entire short-term rental, um, apparatus, uh, experiment, if you will, over the last several years, is still settling into its long-term existence, uh, but there's a lot of good practices out there. Uh, we don't, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Um, they can do that on their own. There's a lot of systems in place to root out, uh, bad players, um, bad renters, bad, uh, hosts, bad guests. Um, and I don't think that's the problem we have in Flagstaff. Like, wh- when I think of short-term rentals, um, as Councilmember Shmoni alluded to, it's about the volume, it's not about the conduct or the behavior that's happening. As with anything in life, there's going to be, you know, uh, some spot fires and problem issues we have to put out, and unfortunate moments or events, or, you know, uh, random, um, introduction of, uh, bad faith actors into the system. Uh, but I don't really think that we have that kind of problem here. Yes, there are complaints, and I'm very sensitive to residents who are frustrated with, uh, the, the way that, um, guests are coming into the neighborhood and not being good guests. Um, but, but I don't know that that's for us to regulate. I think that that's, that regulation happens within the system. Um, I do think we should go ahead and, and, uh, allow for permits. That gives us a little bit of a tool that we can use, um, if, if things get out of control. It puts a little bit of extra pressure on hosts to make sure that they're engaging in a process and good faith with the rest of the neighborhood and the community. Uh, so that's great. And just to be very clear, I'm in a, I, I'm here to bring consensus and direction to what the other three folks on council have already stated, um, pretty much for every bullet point. So I think, I think that's, that provides direction on almost everything we're talking about. Um, but we need to be talking about how do we incentivize short-term renters to rent long-term to our residents who are in need of affordable housing? That's the conversation I'd rather be having. Um, and other than that, I don't really want to micromanage the process. And, and I will tell you, um, from my own personal experience, so, a number of years ago now, I, I don't know how long ago, but, uh, we discovered Airbnb, and, and we used it, uh, for our own home. Um, my family and I would actually vacate the premises to allow a guest to come onto our property. And, uh, I think that was the original intent and spirit of what Airbnb was, and it, it quickly, um, turned into something else. But, uh, I, I will tell you, it was, I, so I've, I've had a, a limited experience with that. Um, it's interesting, uh, when you live in the home, uh, you're inviting strangers into your home, you're trusting them to, uh, not rifle through sensitive areas, um, you're trusting them to leave your carpet intact, and any number of other things, um, not leave the fireplace on all night long, uh, or all week, you know, forever, for however long it is. Um, and it was, it was a, a great experience. What I, what I had trouble with in my neighborhood, and I'll, I'm being totally honest with you guys here, um, we would have guests of color come to stay at our house, and we would get complaints, that's when we would get complaints from neighbors, um, starting to be nervous about who's coming and going from our property. Uh, and that was really disgusting and disappointing to me. Um, if we're here talking about regulation and, and how to keep this process above board, um, I would recommend adding some sort of component, um, to really emphasize, uh, the equal opportunity and equity of, of this process. Uh, and neighbors can't just be complaining because, um, short-term renters are, don't look like they do. Uh, so that's very important to me, and I don't know where that comes into this process in particular. Um, but I see this as an industry that largely regulates itself in the context of the conversation we're having right now. I'm more interested in getting our residents into long-term stable housing, and how we can incentivize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, sweet.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Um, you brought up some really good points, and I do agree with what you just said. Um, for me, the mayor checked off all my, my checkmarks, and I'm in agreement with everything, so you can put me down for that. And I would like to just reinstate that I think working with the county in the uniformity as we move forward is going to be helpful. And I think, oh, background check, um, I'm not interested in going down that road. Thanks.
Vice Mayor, uh, Councilmember Salas.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and thank you, staff, for, for, um, putting all of this information for us to kind of digest and, um, discern, uh, what is best for the entire community, uh, of, the entire city of Flagstaff. Kind of let me, but, let me backtrack a bit. So the earlier, uh, the early slides, we, we have accounted for 887 unique properties and 636 registered. So I am guessing those registered as short-term rentals have TPT licenses, and they pay the 2.281% transaction privilege tax, correct?
Councilmember Salas, they should be paying transaction privilege tax.
Okay, so that means we have about 251 unregulated, uh, short-term rental units who have not been registered, and who have not been paying the 2.281% TPT tax. Also, I want to make it clear that short-term rentals, whether they're registered or unregistered, do not pay the city the 2% bed, board, and beverage tax, correct?
You know, I'm sorry, I don't have that information right in front of me, but they are not a hotel. And the, the, that extra 2% is for hotels.
Yes, yes, uh, so, so just kind of doing the math here, so we have 887 units not paying the 2% BBB tax that goes to fund law enforcement, parks and recreation, library, arts and sciences, beautification, public arts, open space, trails and natural areas. So I think it's imperative that we regulate short-term rentals. We already have the state legislature to use it to, um, to, um, guide us, and also have the League of Cities model, uh, uh... and also have the League of Cities Model Short-Term Rental Ordinance. So I, I'm for licensing and moving forward with an ordinance and I agree with, with what have been presented so far, except for the background check. And no, not interested in the temporary use permit for special events in all residential areas. So let's focus on the short-term rental licenses. And then, I really believe that, yes, we have to address housing. And I, I also believe that in regulating short-term rentals, if the short, the private property owners of short-term rental units may likely rent their properties to families on a long-term basis, then that will add to our housing units. But I do, but I also want to make sure that, make it, make, make it clear that these short-term rentals, as, as, as eloquently articulated by Councilmember McCarthy, these are motels. But not going through the, the inspection and the licensing and not paying the TPT and the BBB tax revenue that the city, that city collects from all legitimate hotels and motels in town. Thank you.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm not going to go on too long because I think most of what I was going to say has been, has been stated. My only thing that I really want to highlight and emphasis in this is, with the understanding that SB 1168 is, is really an industry-based piece of legislation, not necessarily community-based piece of legislation, I think it's going to be really important for us, if we're going through the licensure process, to communicate to our, our community that this is essentially, for lack of a better way of saying it, the best that we can do. Because really what this sets us up to be doing is to be permitting the problem. And that's my concern with, with the idea of, of the license. I'm fully on board with council direction to pursue licensing, but I think it's going to be really important to make it clear to our community why we're pursuing that, the revenue that it generates for the community and that we will continue with, with efforts to mitigate community concerns. But not so that it, it comes across as now we are allowing more, more and more of these short-term rentals to enter the communities when that's really the community concern. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Councilmember Aslan has a question.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember House. Very clearly stated and very critical point that you made there. So my question, and I apologize in advance, Anya, if you already answered this or if this has already been talked about and somehow I missed it. I, I just want to understand more logistically. So when we start, when we engage in this permitting process, do potential hosts going onto a platform like VRBO or Airbnb, are they prompted to fill out a permit and get that done before their listing goes online? Or how does, how does that process work? If we're going to do this, I'd rather see it be a stopgap where they can't move forward until after we've checked a box for them.
Thank you for that, that thought, Councilmember Aslan. So currently in the law says before offering, you know, before offering to rent, not even just renting, before offering to rent, you need to, to register. The, the, we would also have similar language in our new code that said before offering, you know, to rent, you need to, to be licensed. However, this new state law says that we can't charge any penalty for them failing to license until we've given them at least 30 days notice and then they've, you know, have the opportunity to, to license. But technically, I suppose if they weren't licensed and they went ahead and rented, we could try to get an injunction. But the reality is we probably wouldn't spend our wheels doing that. We would just tell them, hey, you need to get licensed, otherwise we're going to charge you a penalty.
Well, maybe that's something we can continue to work on because I would think the, the primary benefit of getting this is just the, the whole concept that the host has to jump through a hoop. They, they have to check a box and they're not allowed to move forward until they've, they've engaged with the city to get that done. Otherwise, it's just, it sounds like it's on the honor system and it doesn't, again, you know, it's, this is just creating red tape and regulations. With the additional concern that Councilmember House just brought up of the perception that we're just, we're suddenly in the business of greenlighting the problem that we're all concerned about. So, thanks for that clarification. Just something else to mull over and consider. It would be really neat if these, if these agencies, these providers wouldn't allow the process to move forward until the correct paperwork was, was downloaded or a screenshot was acquired. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimon.
Thank you. I would just say that, you know, it seems, and I'm trying to go back and forth on this topic, but it seems like these short-term rentals in town already have the green light, right? Everything they're doing is legal, I believe. And so we're just adding a finer process to that green light that they already have. But yeah, I hear you, Councilmember Aslan and Councilmember House, and I appreciate your comments. The only thing I wanted to add, which is kind of going to Councilmember Aslan's point, which is not really on tonight's agenda, so I'm just going to make a note of this and hopefully plant a seed for future discussion. But Sedona City Council approved to allocate $240,000 to the new rent local program in hopes short-term rental owners will instead lease their units to, or properties to local workers. So I think that's a budget conversation, but maybe even a council discussion before the budget conversation to see if there's interest in doing something similar and diving deeper into what Sedona is doing. But I think what they're doing is very creative and ambitious and, and proactive. And I think that we should be thinking about similar types of measures. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one last question. As we do the licensing system, since we do not, because we're not getting all the taxes that we are expecting from this, is there a way that we can backtrack and make a license dependent on paying their taxes that they should have done with their short-term rentals all along?
Mayor, do you see, Councilmember Salas, it occurs to me that it might be helpful if we do a CCR, Council Communication Report, discussing taxation of, of short-term rentals. I think that I'm not prepared tonight to really give you the information that you deserve. And so I'd like to either provide that information, you know, through our city manager or through a CCR, so we can discuss how short-term rentals are taxed versus hotels. So that, let me just, if that's all right with you.
Of course, yeah.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry, what was the second part of your question?
Oh, I was just wondering if with this licensing system, would we be able to make it, for example, contingent on them paying their taxes that they should have as short-term rentals all along?
We, we don't have the information on a per taxpayer basis. The, the Department of Revenue does all the local tax administration and collection. So we're, it's my understanding, we're not necessarily able to pinpoint that. However, their advertisements are required to have the TPT license number. And certainly, I, I'm not sure if Jessica's still on the line or, if Rick Tatter were here, he could help us a little better too. But certainly, we can do, we can coordinate our information with the Department of Revenue. For instance, here's our list of what we have doing business in our community. We can ask Department of Revenue, are these, you know, TPT license numbers remitting taxes? Do you know what I mean?
Gotcha. So that would be after the license, though. We can have an accountability mechanism. I was just wondering if there's a way to recoup the costs since we now are, or would potentially be requiring these licenses. So, but that could be, I mean, we've had the discussion on this quite a bit. We have consensus moving forward, so I won't belabor that just if there is a way of doing so. I think that would be a fiscally responsible thing for us to track down and do.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I, I hear that you're going to prepare a report for council about taxation of short-term rentals versus hotels, et cetera. And I think I heard you say that the 2% BBB tax is not being charged to short-term rentals. I think, I would like to know how we could change that because I think they should be paying it.
And honestly, I can't, I'm sorry, I don't even, I'm not able to answer that question.
You said you'd research it and write us a report at later date. That's fine.
Yes. So that you understand
My, my only point is
short-term rentals versus hotels taxation.
When you do that report, I'm just asking that you also include a discussion on how we could get them to pay the full tax, just like as if they were a hotel, the regular tax and the BBB. And I underst, I mean, not to get into the minutia on this, but from what I understand, the BBB taxes, it specifies what things get taxed, that 2%. But next time that's up or something, we could change that.
Yeah, I do, I, I can tell you that our extra 2% BBB is in the hotel and the restaurant classifications. The city's never adopted an option under the Model City Tax Code called the transient lodging provision of the code. The hotels is section 445 of the Model City Tax Code. Transient lodging is 447. And we, I think, short-term rentals probably fall with under transient lodging. But I'm, I really do want to like spend the time to do a proper report to you and also explain, you know, for instance, the nuances, like our online travel companies that, that, like Expedia and so forth, they, they pay under the hotel classification, they have to pay tax on their commission, whatever it is, 30% when they book a room. They have to pay a tax under the hotel. But they're not, per the state Arizona Supreme Court, they don't pay tax under dash 447. So if we move the 2% out of the hotel and into the 447, you might lose the online lodging operator tax revenue. And this is getting way beyond the scope. But that's, I would like to delve into it and just give you the correct information.
Thank you. Really, really appreciate that. All right. With that, we're, did I miss a? Oh, with the, okay. Just, Heidi Hansen, please. Sorry, no, after I read it. I did see the C.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers Heidi Hansen, interim Deputy City Manager. I just wanted to throw out that we will be going back to the voters in hopefully 2024 on the BBB to extend it because it expires in 2028. And if, after Anya does some research and if we find that we need to change the ordinance to include the short-term rentals, that's probably a really great place to do that. Just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. All right, with that, I think we'll take a short break because I suspect this next agenda item will, will take a bit of time. So, but let's make it a little shorter, a little shorter. It's 6:48 now. Let's be at a, back at seven o'clock sharp, so. All right, we are back at it down to agenda item number 10, informational update on big shift concepts. Take us away, Nicole.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Director. I am here this evening with Jeff Baumann, Traffic Engineer and Interim City Engineer, and Jenny Niemann, our Climate Program Manager. The team is here to provide transportation information and seek direction on transportation-specific policies and initiatives. Through the fair process, we were asked to provide information regarding cities' engineering standards as it relates to speed limits and design characteristics of roadways, to provide information on the Vision Zero approach and adjusting values/priorities to serve pedestrians first, cyclists second, public transit followed by car, share, taxi, and then lastly, private personal vehicles. We want to take this opportunity to also provide the council with an update on the big shift because everything we're discussing tonight could be tools that Flagstaff uses to usher in the big shift. I do want to press pause for a second and let you know that we've added one slide to the slide deck, so you do not have that in your council packet, and that will be slide number 38. So it will be later in the presentation. Our presentation is broken down into three sections. The first section is transportation safety, which will focus on current practices and alternative approaches. The second section is engineering design standards, which will focus on level of service, vehicle miles traveled, and mode prioritization. The third se, excuse me, the third section will provide an update on what is currently in motion for the big shift. Council, the presentation is dense with a lot of information. Our intent is to provide enough information, but not to overwhelm you with concepts and principles. Because we will be seeking direction from you, at the end of sections one and two, staff will pause to discuss and seek direction. Now, before we dive in, I'd like to revisit the roots of the big shift and how the discussion supports it tonight. The big shift is critical to achieving our carbon neutrality goals, supporting the active transportation master plan, which will be before you next week, and numerous commitments to bicycle and pedestrian safety and infrastructure development. The big shift is not one action, it is not one policy, and it is not one program. What it is, is a constant, constantly evolving framework, which requires bold action, bold decisions, active engagement, active listening, funding, and staffing. I invite you to consider the concepts discussed this evening as ingredients to the big shift recipe. And with that, I would like to hand the presentation over to Jeff Baumann.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Jeff Baumann, City Traffic Engineer and Interim City Engineer. I've been struggling with my voice a bit. I don't have COVID, I checked, but struggling with my voice a bit. And so, this is my gift when I got to the podium, some Clorox wipes. So we'll see if we make it through tonight. We've got cough drops in my pocket and Clorox wipes here. We should be good. Let's see, we're jumping right in to the first of the three topics. I'm going to take care of the first two. And the first one is transportation safety. So the, kind of the first area, we want to go through a number of things that we do currently at the City of Flagstaff. So the first one is a brand-new item, the annual crash report. We created, it's about a 20-page document. We created this over the last several months and actually presented it to the Transportation Commission last week in a draft form. So basically, it's five years of crash data, so we can see trends. We, we highlight a couple of safety projects that we've completed over the past couple of years to see if those safety projects are having positive impact. So I think we highlighted flashing yellow arrows. I think we, and then we highlighted some left-turn phasing changes we did out at Marketplace and 89. And then we also identify a couple of things that we'd like to work on over the next year in that crash report. So it's kind of like a mini version of what some of these other larger strategies are that we'll get to in a couple of slides. Also, the Regional Strategic Transportation Safety Plan is a, is a plan that's updated every five years. My notes say that 2018 was the last time we completed that. That's a metro plan effort. Last time they did it with a couple of other, I think NACOG, CYMPO. There was a couple of MPOs and COGS that did this together. And the main, one of the main things that came out of that project or that plan for us was identifying us was identifying these regional problem areas and identifying projects that may be eligible for certain grant programs like HSIP. Something we recently contributed to, was just completed last calendar year, the ADOT State Highway Rail Grade Crossing Action Plan. Some highlights of, that was statewide, but some highlights for us were, it identified the Cottage Avenue spur crossing as an active crossing when it actually wasn't, and we were able to initiate action with the Arizona Cooperation Commission to get that closed. That's actually happening tomorrow. Hopefully, it's on their consent agenda, so we're hopeful. It also identified some pedestrian safety issues we had at our San Francisco Beaver crossings, and we've incorporated some pedestrian gates and some other strategies in that Downtown Mile grant application. So just little tidbits sometimes come out of these plans that can be helpful for us. Operation Lifesaver, many of you have probably heard of Operation Lifesaver. That's a partnership the city has with the Burlington Northern in Santa Fe, and it's mostly outreach and public education. We have a couple of staff members that are trainers. The program has gone pretty quiet with COVID, but I suspect it'll start coming back. But the idea is that there's subsidy employees, they're both in transportation, and they can go out, you know, you get the little yellow keychains, and you go to schools and talk to kids about crossing safety. So that's something that we do, but hasn't been real active with COVID. Sorry, I got to touch the mouse. Safe Streets For All Grant, SS4A, you may have heard about that. That's also a Metro Plan initiative. They've recently submitted this $200,000 application for a safety action plan, and it's focused on vulnerable road users, so that's typically pedestrians and bikes, not on the whole system. But that, that's an application that's in, so we're hopeful, a new program. You never know how those grants will go. And the last two are the, are not the last two, but the next two are the Crash Modification Factors, CMFs, and the Highway Safety Manual, and those work together. Crash Modification Factors, you maybe have heard us talk about when we talk about the HSIP roundabout projects. So Crash Modification Factors are, give you an example, you know, if we have a signalized intersection and we're seeing 100 crashes a year, that's not a real number at all, but we're seeing 100 crashes a year, and the crash modification factor for converting that to a roundabout might be like a point seven. So it would be, you'd see 70% less crashes. So that's what crash modification factors are, and there's, and it's a huge database of peer-reviewed studies. They have, you know, one star, two star, four stars, so you know how reliable these studies are. But we use that when we identify different crash patterns. It helps us identify mitigation. Highway Safety Manual works with that. They work together, so that's why they're placed together. And the last thing is the Highway Safety Improvement Program, which is HSIP or HSIP. You've heard about these projects. We've been successful over the years. It's, it's been a program that's been around for quite a while. ADOT administers it, so we, when they have a call for projects, we apply. It is federal money. You'll recognize some of these projects. Roundabouts are, have really good crash modification factors, so they tend to have really good benefit-to-cost ratios, and that's what this program's all about. The benefits of the crashes that won't happen because of the improvement you're making need to be much greater than the cost of the improvement. That's the benefit-cost ratio. So Four-Center Locker, Turquoise in Switzer Canyon, Roundabouts Sign Replacement Program, we did that a number of years ago, so we replaced every sign in the city to upgrade them to better retroreflectivity to meet new federal standards. Countdown Pedestrian Signals were part of the program. We replaced all the guardrails in Flagstaff a handful of years ago and updated all crosswalks and stop bars with better performing materials, so that was thermoplastic and epoxy. So those have been really good, really good programs for us. Here's just a brief, quick picture, and these, these graphs or tables came out of the annual crash report, and this gives you an idea of how many serious injury crashes on the right and how many fatal crashes on the left that we are, this is our record in Flagstaff, so this includes the ADOT routes, the city routes. You can see we broke out interstate from surface streets. But this is, this is the problem that we're typically trying to address with these safety programs is those fatalities and serious injury crashes. There are certainly other crash types, the smaller, possible injury, no injuries, property damage onlys, those are typically not the focus of these safety programs. But this gives you an idea of what we experience in Flagstaff on an annual basis and the kind of the trend. We also broke, this is also coming out of the annual crash report, so this gives you an idea of the percentage of vulnerable, these are fatalities, over a five-year period, and this, this is, you know, vulnerable road users represent about 43%, so bikes are at 8%, pedestrians are 35%, and then the two middle categories are vehicles. So two or more vehicles are vehicles colliding with each other. Of course, single vehicles are typically run off the road, hit a tree, hit a, hit a lightpole or something like that. So that's kind of what we know. Here's a couple of options that we've looked at as far as moving forward with the questions in that FAIR item. So the FAIR item specifically listed Vision Zero approach, but that's just one of the many branded, if you will, safety initiatives that are out there. So here's three, Road to Zero, Vision Zero, and Towards Zero Deaths, and I'll go into a little bit of detail on each of them. But Road to Zero is basically a 2018 report and has a bunch of strategies, and you pick strategies and you develop your safety plan for your community based on those strategies that they've established. Towards Zero Death, deaths is very similar, it's a 2014 report, and it's, it's kind of the same idea. Vision Zero requires you to create an action plan with a number of things, and I'll highlight, I'll highlight that when we get to that slide. So that's the three that we, we have kind of taken a look at. First one, again, Road to Zero, three main initiatives, double down on what works, advanced life-saving technologies in the vehicles and infrastructure, and prioritize safety by adopting a safe systems approach. They have kind of a neat definition of safe system, systems approach, which I wrote down because I wasn't going to remember everything. So their first thing is safer people. They want educated and responsible behavior of the people, so that's pedestrians and drivers and cyclists. Safer roads, which is about roadway design and mitigating human mistakes, so we hear about that a lot, when drivers make mistakes. We, we should have a forgiving environment. Safer vehicles, which is just improved vehicle systems. Safer speeds, so you're mitigating speeds or you're managing speeds appropriate to the context of the road. We'll talk about that a little bit later. And then post-crash care, so it's a fairly comprehensive approach, obviously involves a lot more than just the Engineering Division or the Traffic Engineer. So that's the Road to Zero. And again, it's a coalition, it's free to join, and they also look at self-driving cars and different things. So they're very comprehensive. You wouldn't have, remember, it's a report with all of these comprehensive things, you wouldn't actually pick everything, you would just pick the things that would make sense for the problems you're having or your community goals. Here's what the branding looks like. Again, it's, it's a coalition nonprofit, and it's managed by the National Safety Council. So that's one option. Here's the Vision Zero Network, which seems to be fairly popular. One thing that's unique about the Vision Zero Network, at least opposed to the other two that we found, is it actually requires an action plan. So you need to go through a fairly comprehensive planning process to create your action plan. And here's just a couple of the things that we've seen in sample action plans, you know, you have to have a plan to manage speeds, again, appropriate for the facility types that you're, that you're looking at. There's multimodal planning, public outreach. And at the bottom of the slide, there's the Vision Zero Minimum Standards. So you need to engage many departments, public health, transportation, police department, there, there may be others as well, perhaps public works. The Vision Zero Action Plan has to have clear objectives and a schedule to achieve those objectives. Need to have someone like the mayor publicly committed, so that may be a resolution probably, and a clear goal, this is the whole point, a clear goal of eliminating traffic fatalities and serious injuries. So two zero is the Vision Zero. Again, it's a nonprofit collaborative campaign. I'll keep going, and we, I have an example of what one community has done, maybe gives you a little bit of an idea, actually two communities. So Towards Zero Deaths, this is the third topic area. This one is a national strategy recognized by ASHTO, and you can see kind of their six key emphasis areas, very similar to the Road to Zero approach, comprehensive and includes vehicles, infrastructure, drivers, vulnerable users, emergency services. It's actually very similar. Here's an example, we love to look, and you'll find that we love to look at Boulder and Portland. They're not necessarily our peers. Boulder maybe is closer to a peer to Flagstaff than Portland is, but they both tend to be high-performing in just transportation in general. They do lots of good things that we'd like to emulate. So we looked at the City of Boulder here, and in 2014, they adopted Vision Zero goals, so they weren't quite a Vision Zero city yet, but they adopted Vision Zero goals. And here's a couple of the goals that we highlighted. They wanted to proactively apply for HSIP funding. They wanted to monitor crashes across the city to identify improvement areas, which kind of is what we've started to do with our annual crash report. And then they have this stated goal of eliminating all traffic fatalities. So that was back in 2014. Five years later, they created their action plan, so that was in 2019, and that's when they became a Vision Zero city, so they probably did the resolution by the mayor and the council. And here's a couple of strategies that we picked up out of their plan that we thought were, just, just would be interesting. So they expanded their red light camera program, so they do a lot of red light camera running there. We've talked about that here, it's been a long time, maybe nobody on council has been part of those discussions, but we did talk about red light cameras many years ago. Improved pedestrian crossings, this can be a number of different things, and then leading pedestrian intervals. So this is, those are a couple of their action plan strategies. There was actually quite a number in their plan, but those are a couple we highlighted. And keeping go, keep going with what City of Boulder has been doing, we, you know, we called and talked to them a bit and sent some emails, and they said about half a million dollars annually is devoted to their Vision Zero projects. So this could be going out to a signal, that leading pedestrian interval, for an example, could be going out to a signal and retrofitting an existing signal. Could be a number of things, but they spent about half a million dollars, and this is the one that really threw us off. They're a bigger city than us, I think maybe 40% more population than Flagstaff roughly, but again, really advanced in this area. These numbers of people kind of blew us away. I mean, transportation planning, 10 FTEs, you know Martin, that's the transportation planning group at this point. We do have a vacant position, but we're, so we're like two compared to their 10. There are some reasons why they're able to do so many cool things and have a great website. You can see the rest of these, the, there, there is quite a disparity between what, what they're doing and what we're doing, both in people and projects. So that was pretty interesting. City of Phoenix, a little closer to home, released their safety analysis and strategies report in 2020, so they've been very active recently as part of their Key Corridors Master Plan. You can see they identified crash statistics and trends, which is something we're doing, and then outlined strategies to increase safety on those specific corridors and streets. So that plan like took, I don't know, Bell Road and looked at all the crashes down Bell Road, and then came up with strategies for individual intersections and the corridor itself. So a very, very detailed plan as part of this corridor master, corridor, corridors master plan. And then you can see here, they approved Vision Zero goals at the beginning of this calendar year, and they're hoping to get their action plan done by the end of the year, and then they will apply or call themselves, I'm not quite sure if you apply or you just call yourself a Vision Zero city, but that's their goal, is to get to Vision Zero sometime in the next couple of months or early next calendar year. So that's kind of the three, those are kind of the three types of safety initiatives or three examples of safety initiatives and kind of, and a little bit of an overview of what we have been doing. And the question with the FAIR item, the question tonight is, did you see enough information that you're interested in us spending some more time on this item to figure out what a reasonable timeline would be to create a safety action plan? It's certainly going to take staffing and resources, consultants. I don't, I don't quite know how these other cities have put these together, but I suspect it's a consultant effort and there's some staffing support. And things like Vision Zero are kind of forever, you create a, it's a program, you're creating a new safety program, they need to be supported continuously. So potential funding sources is something we would need to look at. There could be a grant out there, there likely is grants to get the program started, but I don't know that they would, they would keep themselves going with a grant program. So I wanted to pause here on the safety topic because we do have a lot, so it was, I thought we, as Nicole mentioned, we'd stop at each of these and see where you're at, if you have questions or want to have some discussion.
I don't think Shimonie wants to talk about this at all. No, I, I don't think Shimonie wants to talk, so we'll go to the rest of council if you'd like to mention. No, go ahead.
Please, please. No, thank you. Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Nicole, and Jenny, and Martin, and Martin's nine other employees that work with him, right? Martin, we need to build your team. Oh my gosh, 10 full-time employees at Boulder and you're a team of one? And you're not kicking and screaming every day for support? We'll get there, right? But Jeff, in all seriousness, thank you for the, for the presentation thus far, I know we have a lot more to talk about. I love this conversation. I appreciate you taking the time to explore the, the other options with safety. I think Vision Zero Council is our best approach. It's the most serious approach of the three options from, from what I can tell, and it's definitely what I've seen other communities doing, and they're, they're very proud of it. You know, they really lead with the Vision Zero kind of like underarm badge, quite frankly, they, they have like, they're very proud of that, being a Vision Zero community, but it is a big commitment from the city. Like, as you can tell, this is going to require budget, it's going to probably require Martin to have more team members, and it's also obviously in line with our climate neutrality plan. So I think it's really helping us get to our climate goals while also doing, embarking on a new path that we're really going to be proud of as a community. So I would advise or, or hope that, to recommend that we would consider going down the path of Vision Zero and looking into some of those costs to be discussed maybe at this upcoming budget cycle and, and begin that, that journey as a community. I'm, I'm beyond excited and, and I'm curious to hear what my colleagues think. Thank you. Mayor, I'm so sorry, one last quick question for Jeff. Jeff, with, with federal grant funding support, you know, I'm learning recently that you need to be a Vision Zero community to, to, to receive some of the grant funding around safety. Do you know if that grant funding is also available if you have those other two, Zero Safety, what's the word I'm looking for? Certifications, self-proclaimed?
Thank you for the question, and you had mentioned that, I think, at the retreat. I, I haven't been able to uncover any information that says you need to be a Vision Zero city to apply for grants or to be eligible for grants. I have found information like the Safe Streets For All and those that you can use grant money to work towards being a Vision Zero city. But I haven't found that information. If you have links or somebody to send it, I, I'm curious. But I did, I did look around and, and I, we didn't find anything that was specific to Vision Zero.
Okay, and I'm looking at Miles with Metro Plan who's here, thank you for being here. I had a recent talk with Dave Wessel, and he, he did confirm that my comment was accurate from his perspective. But we will look further into it and find out. But I think that also plays into this decision council. I think federally, they do recognize Vision Zero with a higher level of respect and focus than the other two options, but I may be wrong about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. I, Councilmember Hals.
May I offer a comment, Mr. Mayor, just based on my kind of just institutional knowledge on the IIGA and many meetings I've attended between council and Metro Plan and, and, and ARTHAC, you know, the, there are four kind of interwoven principles of the, the IIGA or BIL or the, the Infrastructure and Jobs Act. It's, number one is safety, and then number two is modernization, number three is climate, and number three is equity. But when it comes to, I remember having this discussion with Metro Plan Board way back, way back when we were trying to sort through all the grant, grant opportunities and the safety, which is the, the Safe Streets For All Grant Program, and I believe, and Metro Plan has submitted a grant for it. We had discussed about having, one of the criteria is, is about having an updated regional transportation safety plan. And also, I mean, and a resilient, resilient, resilient. And also, I mean, and a resilient, resilient plan may also be, be helpful on other grants. But it is, it has been discussed and when it comes to safety, the Safe Streets and Roads For All Grants will fund the development of the safety action plans and project that promotes safety, reduce traffic fatalities and, and support Vision Zero initiatives. In fact, the, the, the law actually spell out Vision Zero initiatives, so, yeah. So my question is, I, I, I am interested in putting together a comprehensive transportation safety action plan, but adding a regional perspective. Because if you're comparing our, our city to Boulder and, and Portland and even, uh, uh, was it Phoenix that was mentioned? Because keep in mind that Flagstaff is where two interstate highways, major highways converge. We have I-17 and I-40, so have a kind of more broader regional perspective when it comes to the regional safety, transportation safety plan. And I recall in the meeting of the Metro Plan, NACOG was leading that effort for the regional safety master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm definitely interested in, in pursuing this. And, you know, just as you were talking, I was taking a moment to look through Boulder's website on their Vision Zero and seeing, you know, the grants and, and programs and, and plans that they've put into place. It's very extensive and they list at the end of their Vision Zero action plan, all of the partnerships that, that were involved in it. And so it's clearly, it, it takes a lot of partnership, not only within the city, but I think what's really exciting to me is their development of a Vision Zero community partnership that included, and it just lists out community cycles, cyclists for community, shared paths, Boulder, Boulder Walks, all of these different kind of community focused groups that I think something like this advances so many of the things that we're looking at as a community and very much inspires that level of community engagement, neighborhood engagement, just engagement of people who are, are part of all of this in the education that it, it brings to the community. So very much interested in this.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Councilmember Aslan.
Hey, I'm very interested in this, and I just want to give a shout out to Councilmember Shimon. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
And I am also very interested, and I've been waiting for this conversation, so it's exciting. Thank you.
Councilmember McCarthy.
I'm also interested, and I, I think this may require some more city funding. I don't think we're probably going to end up with twelve transportation engineers in the near future, but I think we could probably ramp that up some. And then what I've learned working with Metro Plan and with Mountain Line is there's a lot of money out there that we can bring in to push forward our goals. So, you know, when I think of several people getting killed out on our streets and people getting injured, if there's any way we can reduce that, I think we have a responsibility to do that. So I'm supportive.
Well, I'm absolutely supportive. You know, the, two of the major functions of any city government is public safety and roads. So this befits into the very essence of what we should be doing as a city government, to protect people and make sure that our roads are safe and take care of those who are crossing or driving or whatever, whatever it may be. So yes, I'm full support, but always comes down to them duckets. So wherever we can find outside money to help with the designs, I know our team will be able to be on that. And we can start assessing this more thoroughly and what it's going to take employee wise as we go into this budget cycle. Councilmember Shimon.
A quick follow-up, two things, the Boulder, since we're talking about Boulder. For one, they're at a hundred and eight thousand people, so not so much bigger than us, but definitely a little bit bigger. They adopted their Vision Zero plan or, or they started their Vision Zero journey in 2014. So eight years ago. Are we going to be at a hundred and eight in eight years from now? Possibly, right? So we're kind of right on track if we're kind of comparing ourselves to Boulder. And then secondly, I did hear some of my council members talk about Vision Zero specifically. But Jeff, do you need us to go around and do a thumbs up for Vision, Vision Zero specifically? Or do you feel like you have direction to pursue that?
Yeah, I think we feel like we have consensus to explore Vision Zero as the primary.
And I just want to thank everybody on council for your support. I am beyond happy.
Excellent. Let's proceed. Ready for number two? Number two, which has four parts. So this is engineering design standards and not actually all of these apply as engineering design standards, but we'll, we'll go with that heading because it's a nice way to put this through. So this is out, this is the outline. The request was to talk about level of service and level of service exception areas. Vehicle miles traveled, and these kind of work themselves into the TIA process or the Transportation Impact Analysis Process. Roadway design speed, so this is the design speed of our roadways coming out of the engineering standards. And I'll go through all these in detail, of course. And then mode prioritization, which is actually housed currently in the regional plan. And I'll share a couple of slides for what that looks like today. Level of service, so it's a performance measure. And what's interesting or important here that you, you may or may not remember or know is that it's for roads, highways, intersections, bicycle facilities and pedestrian facilities. So there are level of service standards for all of those different facility types. And we of course know A is good or the best, or maybe it's not good, I don't know, and F is the worst. Here's what the table looks like for signalized intersection, so that's one specific thing. And A through F and our average control delay, so that's on average, how many seconds of delay per vehicle. So less than ten is A, and it's generally described as free flow conditions. And you'll remember from recent discussions that we're always shooting for level of service D or better. So D, C, B, or A in our signalized intersection and, and all of the standards. If you've seen any of the Metro Plan presentations recently, Dave Wessel does a really good job talking about vehicle miles traveled. But here's my kind of cheap slide with just, just words. I don't have the cool graphics that he has. But vehicle miles traveled are simply how far a vehicle travels, right? It's one vehicle drives five miles, that's five vehicle miles traveled. And you sum those up across the region, across the day or a year, and that's kind of the vehicle miles travel VMT metric that we like to talk about or that you hear about. This is maybe jumping ahead a little bit, but alternative mitigation strategies. So this is where vehicle miles travel could come into play and where California is, is working now with their TIA process. So they're, California is typically trying to, a new development comes in, they're trying to reduce the vehicle miles traveled. So they know how many vehicle miles traveled a certain development would typically create, say the number's a hundred. They have zones where they say, we don't want a hundred, we want eighty. We don't, we don't want to go as big as it would typically be. And so how would you mitigate from a hundred to eighty? And here are some of the things that you might do. You might require enhanced transit. You might require the development to charge for parking, expanded car share. There could be a number of different things and we'll see some of those. Some of those fall into these kinds of strategies where they could be more infrastructure based and some could fall into the Transportation Demand Management, TDM, strategies. So here's the graphic that you've seen before. We, we showed this back in January. So I think Seth presented this slide. These are a number of different techniques or strategies to help reduce VMT when you're, well, just to reduce VMT. So you can see that four on the left are kind of all land use type things. Transit oriented developments are typically really dense developments with super high levels of transit built into them. Think like a subway running through a building, though it could be done with buses, but typically it's, it's real high level transit. Density of design, we've heard lots about that. Price parking, street connectivity. So those are the really big ticket or the big, the big strategies that can produce the largest reductions in VMT or the, or the, these are the maximum levels. You can see way over in the far right, one of our favorites, scooter shares, only at a tenth of a percent. Sorry Jenny, I had to point that one out. It's one of our favorites. We will make it happen someday. In any case, there's a whole spectrum of things that, that can help reduce VMT, scooters being one of them. This is a really simplified graphic that, that we found as we were putting this presentation together to kind of describe this VMT mitigation or if you're rolling VMT into your mitigation strategy. So the top one is your typical approach. So you have the road on the left that's working. It's free flow conditions, it looks like. You build something and you don't have any mitigation for the road. You can see the road gets very full. Typically here, the typical is you'd add some lanes. And of course, it could be lots of different things, but this is really simplified. We're going to add some lanes, and then out in the future, those lanes will fill up eventually. There'll be more development occur, there'll just be more, there'll be more cars in the community and the road will fill up again. So in the VMT strategy, you have the road that's empty, you have the new development that occurs. You don't provide, there's no mitigation initially. And then your mitigation in this case is you're adding buses to the network. So the idea is you wouldn't expand the road, you'd just add a lot of buses to pick up all of those people trips that need to occur. Of course, in a well-rounded program, you'd do lots of things. You wouldn't just do the buses, but this is the simplified example. And then in future conditions, you still wouldn't widen the road, you just add more buses. So that is one of the VMT type strategies. That's a potential here or something that we're, that we were asking if you're interested in exploring for Flagstaff, often associated with the VMT, because you can see the road got really full, is you need to have level of service exception areas. You don't have to have these two combined, but often I think they are getting combined. So this is an example from Scottsdale. So they created this as part of their transportation action plan in 2022. So it's hot off the press. Basically, most all of the city is level service D like we are here. But then in certain areas, and typically it's urban core where, like think Aspen Avenue. We don't want to add right turn lanes on Aspen Avenue. It's this downtown environment. We don't have any room for it. We don't want to do it for character reasons. We want, there, there could be a bunch of reasons and some of them are, are listed here. So you go through a modeling process and you figure out what, you know, there, there are impacts to allowing level of service to get to E to get worse. You know, you're probably going to have, well, you will have more congestion. Associated with congestion is often crashes, though they're not usually severe, there are often more crashes. And you may have some diversion, you know, if you allow certain streets to get to poor level of service. If there are adjacent streets, they're likely to pick up traffic. So you have to be really careful with this. It's not something that you want to go, yeah, let's make that one. And that one, you really need to go through a fairly extensive modeling process to understand the trade-offs. But Scottsdale has done that in a few areas. So they designated activity cores and urban roadways. So they have a map with these certain areas. So interesting, someone in Arizona has done this. Typically, this has been associated in the past with really large cities, Boston, New York kind of places, downtown where you're providing lots of sidewalks, could provide, could be providing biking opportunities, but the subway system and things like that provides that alternative mode that's very viable. Typically, that's the trade-off that you're making or the trade-offs that you want to be available if you're going to do a level of service exception zones. So that's kind of VMT and LOS. I'll keep going and, and we'll have a pause, but not yet, if that's okay. So design standards was another one of the engineering standard questions that were, we were asked to take a look at. So there's kind of four ways to think about speed. And one, you know, operating speed is what the vehicles are doing on the street. Design speed is what you have designed the facility to handle. And posted speed is what you put up for the sign. And in many cases in urban or suburban areas, we call all of those target speeds. So we want all of them to be the same. Historically, for rural highways, for example, like Interstate seventeen may have a design speed of like eighty-five or ninety, and they posted at eighty, usually it's ten. So they probably built it at eighty or eighty-five and now it's posted at seventy-five. And that was kind of a factor of safety, and that's how rural highway design works. Urban and suburban, typically you're trying to align all of these. So you want your operating speed to match your design speed to match your posted speed limit. Of course, posted speed limit has, we've talked about that a little bit, but it has a lot to do with what people are actually doing. That's how the engineering analysis is done per state laws. So that's speeds and kind of how they, how they work together. Design of speeds is super complicated. There is a bunch of factors and we listed many here, but this is not an exhaustive list. But some of the big ones we tried to highlight first, which is how curvy is the road and how tight are those curves? So that's horizontal curves. Vertical curves are your hills, your crest and your sags. Those control speeds really well. Road function and purpose has a big part because there's, and that, that's kind of a broad category, but you know, local streets, people don't expect local streets to be posted at sixty-five, even if they are long and straight. Context and function has a lot to do with the speeds that we'll see out on those streets. I'm not going to go through the whole list, but you can see driveway density, where the buildings are adjacent. Lane widths do make a difference, not much. Pavement conditions, driveway densities, just on and on. Here's a little bit of information about speed limit signs, because this is a popular question or a popular request. So the speed chosen by, I would say, reasonable drivers on roadways is determined by multiple factors. Again, horizontal and vertical curves, the number on the sign tend to have little to no effect on speed. So there's lots of, lots of people have tried posting different speeds and usually you may see one mile per hour difference, which is generally imperceptible. You can measure it, but it's fairly imperceptible. Again, we go to Boulder. Boulder decided they would change all of their local streets to twenty miles per hour. They went back out and measured them and there was no change at all across the city. Little surprising, but not, not really. I mean, that's what we've been, that's what we've been taught. Engineers have been taught for a long time and it played out again. So here's how this all comes together in the engineering standards. This particular table, and I've abbreviated it so that it, it's not too much, but this is the urban table. You can see that on the top. And then functional classifications, you can see on the left is the major arterials. Those are typically the ADOT routes, all the way down to residential local streets on the far right. So we have our, these are all urban again, all the different classifications of road. And you can see in our engineering standards, there's a predetermined speed that we'll design each of these facilities to. And once you pick that speed, then there's a number of criteria that fall below that. So one of the questions is that we're asking tonight, and we'll, we'll ask it later, but here's a kind of a preview is, do we want to adjust this table? Do we think that minor arterials shouldn't be, shouldn't be designed for forty? Because if they're designed for forty, they're likely to operate at forty and so on. So that's a preview of what we're talking about for speeds. Now transitioning to mode prioritization, this is a table out of the regional plan. So this is not in the engineering standards, but there's a series of tables. This is the urban one, and I'll just jump to this one. This is the suburban and rural tables. So the top is the suburban, the lower is the rural. And you can see we have all the different things we're trying to accomplish in the roadway or different, I wouldn't say modes of travel, because we have parking in there as well, but auto, transit, bike, ped and parking. And then it's by the area types, which are activity centers, which are these urban parts of the suburbs. So we have suburban activity centers. You've all heard this before, I think, in different contexts. But we break them out, activity center in general. And then you can see this is the use type and level of service. And so basically, what we wrote on the far right is kind of the story. The tables are used to determine which features to enhance when right of way is scarce. So we have our typical cross-sections for all of these different scenarios. But when we get in a pinch and we can't fit all of the different things, we're supposed to go look at this table to figure out kind of how we prioritize the limited space that's available. These also help us in developing our roadway cross-sections. So in urban activity centers, for example, we have really wide sidewalks. We have ten-foot sidewalks and we don't have the planting parking strip. We have a furnishing strip because it's an urban area and there's typically on-street parking. So that's how an urban street is laid out and that's kind of based on this. When you get to suburban and rural, maybe the sidewalk goes to six feet or maybe it even goes away in the rural context. feet, or maybe it even goes away in the rural context. This is how mode prioritization is built into our regional plan and engineering standards today. Here's a different way to look at it. And again, we'll go to Portland with this kind of upside-down triangle. City will implement a hierarchy of modes for people movement, making transportation system decisions according to the following prioritizations. So this is similar to the fare item, walking, cycling, transit, shared vehicles, and then private automobiles. So this is their general hierarchy. And then the next page explains how they implement that. And this is, this is really important, to know how they implement that, because, I'll just go through each of these, because I think they're pretty important. So the needs and safety of each group of users are considered, and changes that we make to existing conditions can't make things worse for the most vulnerable users higher on the list. You can't make changes that make it worse for other people higher on the list. Really important. Second one, all users' needs are balanced, with the intent of optimizing the right of way for multiple modes in the same street, so we're not leaving anybody behind, no matter where they're at on the triangle. When necessary to ensure safety, we're gonna accommodate some users on parallel streets. A lot easier to do in Portland with a grid than it is in Flagstaff. We don't have that many parallel streets. We're always trying to cram everything on the same street, but that is a really nice, handy tool to have. But, and this one's, this one's good, too. Land use and system plans, network functionality for all modes, other street functions, and complete street policies are maintained, so that triangle doesn't mess up your broader planning objectives, or the continuity of arterial streets, for example, or different things like that. And the last one, policy-based rationale is provided if modes lower in the ordered list are prioritized. So the, the triangle isn't absolute. There's gonna be reasons or times when things need to be shuffled around. So, in a nutshell, how Portland is doing their prioritization. I have this, this slide. This is the roadway classification map. Just to remind you, we have a hierarchy in Flagstaff of different roads. Green is the interstate system. Blue are the major, I'm sorry, I'll go to red first. Red are the major arterials, which are essentially the A dot routes. You can see working their way through the city, the arterials. And then we, the city typically has the blue, which are the minor arterial routes. And interstate's major arterials and minor arterials, of course, are for moving, typically, moving people long distances, moving them through the region, you know, across the region, sometimes not even stopping in the region. So, the priority on those roads are the highest function typically, though it gets confused when you get into urban cores. But typically, for those facilities, is moving vehicles, moving people longer distances, less driveways, less interaction, higher speeds. That's what the, the public expects. That's how we build those facilities. The other end of the spectrum, you know, we're moving down the list. Magenta is major collectors, and the yellow is the minor collectors. Local streets are not shown on this map. We don't map those. But of course, local streets are the opposite of the arterials. We want low speeds, low volumes, lots and lots of driveways, just unfettered access. So, it's kind of the spectrum of the hierarchy of roads. So that's what our map looks like. Not, and, and, and so speeds follow those hierarchies, for the most part, with some exceptions. Other cities do it the same way. I didn't, we didn't grab the roadway classification map, but we did grab the speed limit map, which is pretty interesting. And, and it's broken. This is both, you can see, it's both the hierarchy of roads and the speed limits. So City of Boulder, looks like they do their principal arterials, 35, 40 and 45. We have two roads that are moderately rural that have 45, but all of ours would be 35 or 40 typically. Minor arterials, 25 to 35, which would be the same banding that we use. Collectors, also 25 to 30 would be the same banding that we use. Local streets are not shown here, but as we mentioned before, Boulder went with this 20 mile per hour. I don't know if it's an experiment or not, or if they're gonna stick with it. But you can see, kind of similar to what we do. Portland's is very busy, and here's that amazing grid that can do all sorts of things for you. But you can see, they have a similar hierarchy with major streets at 45. They're, they use kind of a different terminology, district collector, neighborhood collectors, 25 to 35, and their access streets and local service streets. So, again, even these fairly urban, gridded cities still have a fairly, fairly robust hierarchy of different street types and different roadway speeds associated with them. So, similar to what we do. That was number two. Again, has about four parts. I feel like I'm trying to go kind of fast, because there's still another part to go. So here we are. We have a number of questions with this one, and I'm happy to back up some slides if you'd like some more information. But, the first question is, does the city council want us to further investigate VMT as a performance measure for future transportation impact analyses? So, one of the first steps before you can even get to this point is you need to have a regional model that can do VMT. We didn't have that, but MetroPlan is creating that now through their RTP update. So, we have at least the first part of the tool to be able to implement this. Though, this is a, this is a big deal. California had a, I forget how they call their state laws, but they passed a state law to, to add VMT, to require VMT as part of their environmental review for the TIA process and many. And so all cities are required to do VMT. And I think they're on year seven or so of implementing. It's taken them that long to figure out how to do this. And most cities do their traditional TIA process with level of service and add on VMT to the TIA process. So, you know, the TIA process is long and slow and complicated. This does add another step, so just be aware. It has benefits, but it definitely adds another step. Second question is, are we interested in doing the modeling and doing the analysis to see if some level of service exception zones would be of interest to the city council? So this would be likely, I don't, I don't have, you know, it's not predetermined, we haven't done any of the work, but likely some area around the downtown core would be my expectation. Where we say level of service D is not required, we would allow development to go to level of service E, or we would build to E. E does have a cap. F doesn't have the cap, right? F just goes on forever. So, I think most cities, I don't know, I think most are going to E. Standard design speeds for future roadway planning, that's another question. Do we want to look at all of those tables? I showed you the urban table. There's also a suburban table and a rural table. Do we want to look at those and reduce some speeds on, or raise speeds? But I assume it's reduced speeds is the question. And the fourth item is the regional plan. There's potential to update those tables through plan amendment process, or what I would recommend is that we work on that through the regional plan update that's getting started, as opposed to tackling that one as a plan amendment. Four easy questions. All right, who wants to jump in? Other than Shimonie. I mean, I'll jump in if I want to, but.
Well, I think it's a good goal to try to reduce vehicles' miles traveled. But, I also realize that it's a very difficult thing to accomplish. I think, you know, land you, I've said this before, I think land use plans have more impact on VMT than anything else. But, the very nature of land use plans is it evolves over many, many years, over decades. So I think it's worthwhile to have it as a goal, but I don't see that we're gonna make, you know, major changes in that right off the bat, you know? And as far as the level of service exceptions, yeah, I, I think in certain areas like downtown, that might make, that might make sense. And then design standards for future roadways. I, I, when I read this packet, the most interesting thing to me was when Boulder changed their speed limit to 20 miles an hour from 25, and didn't make any difference. So, I guess on number three, are you talking about, well, maybe we should make roads narrower, or put more curves in them on purpose? Or what, what do you think might come out of number three, if we decided to do that?
Thank you for the question. Yeah, so number three is the design speed. So it wasn't, it wasn't impacting existing streets. It was to change our design, our design table for when we build new roads.
Like John Wesley Powell, for instance.
Like John Wesley Powell. So, I think based on the table, it would be, I think, that arterial. So, the question would be, would 35 be more appropriate for an arterial?
Well, it might be more appropriate, but I guess the question is, how would you accomplish that? It's not gonna be done with signs. It has to be done with width of the road, or, you know, you know, the, the nature of that road is kind of curvy anyway. It's not like a straight through. So I think it, it might be an interesting goal, but again, I don't think it's like, boom, you're gonna flip a switch and then it's done. It's a gradual thing. It's, it's something to keep in mind, but I take it with a little bit of a grain of salt. You know, I think the city on certain Fridays is down at level of service F now. I recently was up by the north end of Humphreys, and there were some high school students walking down the sidewalk. And when I got to Aspen, they were right next to my car. So, the point is, on Milton, well, actually, that's Humphreys, but sometimes in Milton and Humphreys, you could literally walk faster than you can drive. Well, some people might accept that, but there's a lot of people in the general public that that just makes them angry. It's like, what now are we gonna do about this? Something needs to be done. So, I think we have to take into account what the public's expectations are on some of these things also. How's that for a non-definitive answer?
Councilmember Shimonie, then Councilmember Salas.
I can't help it. I had to jump in. Thank you, Councilor McCarthy, for those comments. You know, with VMT, this sort of, this is, these conversations have been, you know, almost four years in the making for me. So I'm so grateful we're finally having them at the council level. But, for four years, I remember talking to leadership at the city, saying, are we moving people or are we moving cars? And so VMT, it really kind of changes, flips the script from levels of service, where you're really focused on cars, and says, okay, we're moving people. How do we best move people? And, and that's the holistic approach that I think we as a city need to take. And, and to, you know, your comments about the congestion, you know, I think VMT gives us more tools to address that congestion than just building more lanes. Because I think VMT, in the end, might take longer in the TIA process, Jeff, right? But in the end, it'll also save the city a lot of money. Because instead of just building more roads that we have to maintain and, and just more concrete, we're thinking creatively outside the box. And that's ultimately gonna result in a smaller footprint of concrete, which is gonna be better for the budget, right? So we have to keep that in mind, too. So, that's where I'm at on VMT. Full support. I think it benefits our community tremendously. On levels of service, I think it's important that we not just focus in on downtown, but really, you know, I'm thinking Southside, I'm thinking about Butler, I'm thinking about where people are crossing the road. One slide that wasn't in this presentation, maybe it's yet to come, but I'll, I'll just verbalize it. What I was hoping was gonna be presented was, a pedestrian intersecting with a car moving 40 miles an hour, which is quite a few of our roadways, has an 85% chance of fatality. So, there's a lot of collisions when you look at the crash map along corridors where cars are moving 40 miles an hour. 85% chance of fatality. So thinking about the Vision Zero conversation we just had, you know, I think that in adjusting our, our chart and our speed allocations will result in a higher chance of life, of survival, if and when a crash occurs. And, and so I'm just thinking, if you look at that map, Jeff, that you put up of the City of Flagstaff, all those areas of which kind of cross where pedestrians are, that's where I want us to have some flexibility. And if you recall back with the bicycle party groups petition that they brought forward to us a couple years ago, or a year ago at this point, they asked for us to address their speed limit on Butler. And, and, and I, I don't think we're really allowed to because of this chart, to a certain degree. So, all I'm asking is that we have more flexibility with our speeds, and have more of a range, rather than, okay, at this, this, if it's this type of road classification, it's 40. If it's this type, it's 35. But maybe give us a little bit, as, a little bit more flexibility as council to say, hey, maybe that road should be 30 versus 35 or 40. Because it does cross by where neighborhoods are. And we know that at 30 miles an hour, there's almost a 50% chance, 50% chance of fatality versus the 85. So, that's where my mind's at when we have that part of the conversation. And, and with Boulder's example, Councilman McCarthy, that's a great point, but it's only year one after they changed the signs. So, you know, think about the kids who are growing up, next generation, 20 years later, they're heading in the right direction and they're trying. And maybe this, they didn't solve it overnight, but they can keep taking those steps. And I think those, those steps are valid, right? In terms of mode prioritization in our regional plan tables, I'd like to see the pyramid that Jeff showed, that the City of Portland has. If we were to adopt that, Flagstaff, city council, if we were to adopt that chart, how would that overlay on the chart that we have in the regional plan? And the Vision Zero, how does that overlay with that chart? And so I know that there's talk about doing that as part of the next regional plan update, but I think that's a question at hand. And those are the, the changes I'm hoping that we can make as a city, is, is that overlay of priorities on that chart. As Jeff said, we have limited roadways, and we try to cram everything together. And it's a matter of trade-offs. And who it is that we're prioritizing. Are we prioritizing a center turn lane, or a median, or an additional buffered bike lane, you know? And those decisions are made based off, off of the prioritizations in that regional plan chart. So, that's a change I'm hoping we can give direction on tonight, is to better prioritize those needs that Portland has gone ahead and done. And I, I really appreciate that slide about how Portland addresses this. I think that, that makes a lot of sense to me. I think that's all the topics on this section. Thank you.
Councilmember Shimonie, Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Baumann, for this presentation. Let me start by saying, I believe that transportation, safety and efficiency are very intrinsic to a thriving community and a resilient economy. And that's the reason why I'm actively involved with, with MetroPlan, and even with that role in the statewide rural transportation advocacy council. Kind of, before we delve into further discussing these items, kind of let me, let me just share some, some facts. In the 2021 Flagstaff Community Survey, transportation was identified as top priority to improve quality of life, and automobile transportation as highest priority, with 69% of the respondents. 61% of war force, Flagstaff war force, drive to work. Flagstaff attracts 6 million visitors a year. We have 183,000 peoples from our tribal neighbors who live on the reservations, drive to Flagstaff for work, for, and for, for goods and services. With respect to the VMT, as Mr. Baumann has mentioned, MetroPlan is actually updating the regional transportation plan to set the, the regional model for VMT. And I think that, that, that modeling is important, and not for the city not to do its own VMT. It's also important to note that we have voter-approved Longtree Overpass and JW Powell Extension. And I believe there are some presentations by the MetroPlan soon, and I've, and I've had the opportunity to, to, to see the presentation. The onward plan of the MetroPlats, MetroPlan stride forward increases vehicles' mile traveled by 460,000 miles a day by 2030. I firmly believe that transportation strategies must encompass community design to expand urbanized areas. urbanized areas, increase density and connect more streets, which Councilmember McCarthy has mentioned, has something to do with land use. And this has something to do with a broader look of our regional plan, which is also currently being updated. So with that in mind, I believe all of these points need to be interspersed with current public process through the Metro Plan stride forward planning and our regional planning, transportation planning. Also, keep in mind, while we identify these models, Boulder, Portland, Phoenix, we also have to recognize that the major archillars in our city are not even managed by the city. They are managed by the state. ADOT, Milton, Four Valley, Highway 180, East and Best Route 66, and even Humphreys, and even Switzer Canyon. So of course, ADOT has their level of standards and, and also engineering standards, which are national recognized standards. So keep that in mind. And I have to note that we could not, I mean, we can, we can reduce the speed limits and stuff, but we could not legislate or control distracted driving or driving under the influence. Or in my case, many times, I have seen pedestrian and bicyclists who are not even looking, crossing the street, who don't even have flashers at night. Just kind of like my personal note here. So with your question, Mr. Baumann, can you please return to the, the... Yes, I, I'm very much interested into the engineering design startup, but they all have to be interspersed with Metro Plan stride forward as it's doing the VMT modeling. And I believe also with the Metro Plan stride forward, it even has the, the travel demand strategies that promote work from home, ride sharing, less driving, and of course, double the transit, quadruple the biking, less green facilities. What happened? Okay, so. Is that my mic? It's unmute. Yes. Yeah. So, and then of course, all of this discussion need to, to be included in the regional plan update. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy.
Yeah, just to come back to design speeds a little bit, a couple of points. One is, I don't think we need to go across town at 40, 50 miles an hour. You know, 35 miles an hour is great. The other thing is that, you know, if the speed limit were 35, people would go 40. Well, 40, I remember from a, a project I did in college, is about the optimum speed as far as moving the most vehicles down the street. Because if you're going 60, you're farther apart for safety reasons. And if you're going 20, you're not moving. So 40 is like an optimum speed to move the most cars down the street per unit time. So, you know, a speed limit of like 35 is probably a better goal for our arterial streets than say 45, in my opinion.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. All right, I'll weigh in here. Yes to the VMT as a performance measure. I think this would just be in general enlightening for us when we are seeing new developments. I'm thinking of one in particular on how that's going to increase our VMT for the entire city. Then on the LOS exceptions, yes, and I think that would be a good endeavor as we update the regional plan. And in terms of the speeds, this does say specifically standard design speeds rather than the stated speeds. Because I didn't, I homeworked too on this, not just with Boulder, but this is nationally, people aren't abiding by signs, unless they're flashing with radar. Radar speed signs do work and decreases by, what is it, like 10, 20% speeds. But that being said, in terms of the standard design speeds, I would be willing to do more variable, not, we're absolutely going to do 40. It can be a, a range, 35 to 40 even, or whatever it may be. And I think that gives us some flexibility, especially when we're thinking of JW Powell, because there's going to be additional developments there. And we're going to want people to probably, to be slowing down in areas that may be a higher density residential compared to an R1 for going speeds or where pedestrians might be actually crossing the street, as opposed to a couple of miles where there may not be anyone really crossing the street. So I'm, I'm saying I'll, I'm good with the variable speeds on that for the design standards. And yes, putting this into the regional plan would be appropriate. And thank you, Councilmember Salas, for bringing up what Metro Plan is doing, as we certainly need to align with our partners, as we know that we don't control all them streets. So, all right, there's my two cents. Next, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So I am definitely a yes on 1 through 3. And, you know, just a thought, I remember doing a meeting with some of the staff in Portland, and we did talk a lot about the inverted pyramid. And I think that's just a mind shift, even if we can't do all of that all of the time here in Flagstaff. It does, it, it really changed my idea of, of projects. And I just would recommend everyone take another look at that and use it for the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Assland.
I'll be brief. I'm a yes for 1 through 3. And I know that Miles and David are watching this, or they will watch it. And I, I, I just have a lot of faith in Metro Plan's ability to bike and chew gum at the same time here. A lot of these transitions are, are going to be seamless, and it's because they're paying attention to what we're doing. And, and we bring this mandate to them by being on their board as well. So looking forward to the synergy, which is a word that came up a lot at our, at our previous Metro Plan meeting. And just good communication between the city and Metro Plan on this and ADOT. And thank you, Councilmember Salas, for all the attention to detail that you bring to that and for the advocacy that you take to the state capitol all the time. And again, Councilmember Shumoni, I hope you're feeling good tonight. This is a big part of your legacy.
Councilmember Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'm in agreement on 1 through 3. I'm not going to reiterate what Councilmember Assland just said, but I do think, I don't know if you were seeking direction on the potential regional plan changes between whether we thought it should be amendments now or incorporation into the regional plan update? Was that the question there?
The, the question was, were you interested in this topic? And then there's a couple of options on how to pursue that, excuse me.
Okay. So for me, I, I think I'm interested in seeing it as part of incorporation into the regional plan update rather than working through amendments now, especially considering the amendments that were just made. But I think by incorporating it into the regional plan update, that allows for the more collaborative process with Metro Plan and, and other stakeholders who are going to have some stake in, in some of these considerations.
Thank you. With that, I think we're good to proceed.
Nice job, Jeff.
I've been instructed to use wipes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Three cheers to Jeff for getting through that. I'm going to round this out with a discussion on ongoing work towards the Big Shift. And so this is the new slide in your packet. And we wanted to put it in here because it really speaks to the CCR, City Council Report that we wrote in March, that really talked about transforming transformation, talked about the Big Shift. And there's a lot here, and I don't expect you to read it all, but the main message is, there's a lot happening, there's a lot that's in progress, and there is much work to be done. And so I'm going to talk about the things in green and darker blue here, because those things are completed or in progress. And, I see. Thank you, Stacy. So those things are completed, are in progress, right? And so I'm going to get into those and, and we'll get into those details. And the broader message here is that there's much more work to come. As Nicole kind of alluded to before, you know, the big shift is not, you know, just a, we're done, one policy, right? Or one program. It is turning a big, big shift. It will take really deep work on our systems and our processes, the deep work that you all were just discussing about and that Jeff brought to you tonight. And so, you know, we really hope that this conversation moves us away from kind of project-based discussions to these policy changes, right? And at the end of the day, this is about how we think about transportation. It's about how we talk about transportation with our neighbors, right? I know, you know, you know how we talk about traffic, right? How, how might we change those conversations in some ways, changing expectations, right? You know, about what we expect from our transportation system. And so the message here is really, I'm going to talk about progress and a lot of work is happening, but much more work is still needed. And that really is in this sort of phase four and beyond here. There's much more to come. What I am going to talk about right now, though, is the in-progress thing. So I'm going to talk about a city code analysis project, an update on our partnership work with Metro Plan, and then a brief update on the stride forward regional transportation plan. So the first highlight is, I'm really proud to say, an initiative council approved significant funding for in this fiscal year. The code analysis project will look at our city codes and analyze how they help achieve both housing goals and how we achieve the goals of the 10-year housing plan and the carbon neutrality plan. So funding was awarded to both the Sustainability Office and to our Housing Section for this project. We are really excited to be working on this project with our partners in housing, as well as our planning staff, led by Ms. Shaw McNulty, as well as Jeff and his team in engineering. And we're bringing in folks from Economic Vitality, Water Services, IT, and more. We've worked the summer to build a scope of work for this project, and this will be prepared, sorry, we've begun pushing the scope into a formal RSOQ, working with our partners in procurement. So that is TBD for now, but it's going to be paired with another project on land analysis and land suitability. And so we're really excited to pair these two projects together, to work across divisions to say, with our existing codes, with what we have today, what are barriers to achieving our broader community goals in housing, in sustainability, and beyond, right? And so this analysis will do a couple of things. It's going to go through our development-related codes, really line by line, to see how codes might be changed to support housing, sustainability, and more. For climate specifically, we're looking at all three of our goals. So we're not just looking at reducing emissions, right? Which is, oh, energy efficiency, transportation, et cetera. We're also thinking about resilience, passive survivability in our, in our buildings, for instance, as well as equity, which is obviously deeply tied to our housing goals. Housing, well, we're looking at really housing supply and affordability and how our current codes might affect that. And this is really going to result in two things. It's going to result in identification of codes that produce barriers, and then it's going to result in recommendations for those revisions. We're really excited for those because that will lead to a conversation about how we change our codes for the better. And then we'll actually test those codes on projects in Flagstaff to make sure that they really work. So this is a multi-year project, but we are starting. There's a lot of internal staff work going on. I get to be the face of it today, but it really is led by a ton of folks, particularly in community development. Another project that was mentioned in the Big Shift CCR City Council Report was the Transforming Transformation Workshop. As I mentioned before, the Big Shift really involves how we think about transportation, right? It relates to the conversations y'all just had. And one of the most important things that we want to do is support Team Flagstaff in making this shift, but also all of our regional partners. And so in May, we got 30 transportation-related staff, so planning staff as well, from the city, from Metro Plan, Mountain Line, the county, ADOT, and NAU in the room. And, and we brought in national experts. We spent time reviewing national best practices and then really talking about, okay, how do, how do we get this done in Flagstaff? This workshop was done through the mini-grant that we've mentioned before that we received from Metro Plan, and this workshop was in deep partnership with Metro Plan. And what's really exciting is that we came back with real results. I don't expect anyone to read this, but I just wanted to show you, it was put together by our facilitators, who are the same folks working on the stride forward regional transportation plan. And it just illustrates the wide range of conversation and how much we could take away from it. I think the biggest takeaways were the need for better alignment in our plans, right? And, and in taking action. And that goes back to sometimes the regional planning, right? Talks a lot about the same things that we're talking about tonight. It also, you know, we really talked a lot about staying biased towards action and taking action and working together. Next, we've got some more progress to talk about. And, and what we like to say about the Big Shift is that it will take everyone. The nice thing about that is that we get to celebrate everyone. And so this is where we get to give a big congratulations to Team Flagstaff, to you all, to our capital team, most importantly, maybe, for the Downtown Mile project. The Downtown Mile project is a part of the Big Shift, right? It prioritizes moving people across really big barriers, right? It's a really, really cool example of this city taking big steps to move people and prioritize their movement, right? It does a lot of other things, too, right? And we're so excited about it. But I think it, it really kind of sets a new step forward because there's such clear alignment. The federal transportation priorities have a lot to do with walkability, right? With climate, with equity, et cetera, right? And so this, that clear alignment is just so exciting for us to see. So congratulations to that team and really all of Team Flagstaff. In terms of upcoming work on the Big Shift, as we've already talked about, the Active Transportation Plan will come to council in November and represents the policy kind of support for so many Big Shift concepts. The next thing is, we have two really exciting projects, and they really relate to everything you all just discussed. The city is partnering with Metro Plan on both of these, and these are the second and third portions of that mini-grant that I mentioned. And so the first project is the work to integrate VMT into our transportation modeling and analysis. And so that will bring it into the stride forward RTP process. And this is just really important, and I'm kind of repeating what, a little bit what we've talked about, but right now, we don't use VMT as a metric in our transportation decisions, right? But VMT is one of the most key metrics of the carbon neutrality plan. We know that, you know, it's not just electric vehicles, right? We have to maintain and reduce our VMT. And so a lot of other cities have also started using VMT as a metric to look at less, yeah, what are the impacts of traffic, but more, if we have this development, right? And so this, what this project will do, it will say, when we have this development or when we have this infrastructure project, how does that impact VMT? How many more cars does that put on the road? And how many more miles does that lead to be driven? Some developments may have really high impacts, some may not, right? And how do we think about those two developments, you know, differently, right? Because they are really different in terms of their impact. So we are so excited for Metro Plan's support and partnership here. The next project is performance standards. Again, this is also part of the Metro Plan mini-grant, and it will consider what standards we adopt to guide our decisions. It's kind of just the third leg of the stool of, you know, we need the data, right? And when we're making decisions, what are the standards that are going to help us know if we're getting it right, right? That's a big question because we haven't done this work before necessarily in this context of VMT. And so, again, the consultants will that are working on the regional transportation plan are working with this, so we're really excited about things being in lockstep. So these things are moving forward. They are, because they're tied to the RTP, we will be working on them in winter and spring of this year. And so we will have an update for you all. And so, we will have an update for you all around that time, on how these things are moving forward. Finally, we are thrilled that the Stride Forward Regional Transportation Plan is moving forward, and I'd like to just pause and appreciate, this plan is really considering how we will meet our transportation-related goals in the Carbon Neutrality Plan, and it is so deeply exciting to us. So, we are happy to be joined by Metro Plan CEO Miles Mileback tonight, who can speak briefly to the status of this plan. Miles?
Thank you, Jenny. Mayor and Council, my name's Jeff Mileback. I go by Miles, because it's short for vehicle miles traveled. And I do appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm the Executive Director of the organization, and I want to recognize the relationship that Metro Plan has with the city is very close. And it's not a matter of Metro Plan providing information, and the city acts on it, or vice versa. We really create this together. And from a policy perspective, and I just want to make sure it's clear, and I want to recognize Councilmember McCarthy for chairing the Metro Plan Board, Councilmember Salas for serving on the Metro Plan Board, and the RTAC Board, and also Councilmember Aslan, who's on the board. You talked about a lot tonight, and the Stride Forward Plan is Metro Plan's effort to look forward 25 years and create, and this is the mission of Metro Plan, to create the finest transportation system in the country. Of course, the question is, what is the finest transportation system in the country? It depends who you ask. And ultimately, the community together has to make some of those decisions, and they get reflected in our plans, and then hopefully, they get reflected on the ground. There are two things in the Stride Forward Plan. One is the onward plan, which is basically building out the projects as designed, and what that would look like if we stay on this trajectory. And the other is the upward plan, that would reach for maintaining vehicle miles traveled. It would try to keep those vehicle miles traveled down. So, we're still fine-tuning that plan, we're doing a lot of public input, and we'll be bringing it to council after the first of the year. I'd like to say one other thing that's not on my talking points, but it occurs to me as I listen to the discussion tonight. And I think perhaps it amplifies something Jeff shared, and that Councilmember Sweet pointed out. I think the most impactful thing that you can do is to adopt policies, and then hold us responsible for delivering them. If the pyramid is inverted, if that's what the, you know, the policy direction is, well then, we need to go figure out how to put those things in place. I also want to be clear, though, that I am agnostic on what you decide. I'm not here to say invert the pyramid. I'm here to say that we will design, work to design the kind of plan that this community wants, and it's just, it's a process, of course, to keep figuring that out. So, thank you again for the partnership, and for the opportunity to come up and introduce myself tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Salas?
Just for clarity, and for the public information, Mr. Miles, could you just kind of scope out the coverage of Metro Plan in terms of the metropolitan planning boundaries?
Scope out the boundary of Metro Plan, to describe to people? Thank you.
Like east, west, south, north?
Yes. Mayor and Councilmember Salas. So, our boundary is identical, actually, to the Mountain Line Transit System Boundary, which is greater Flagstaff. And we define that as south to, south of Kachina Village, and then Doni Park to Belmont. So, we really are within the more urbanized area. We don't extend very much farther into the county.
Thank you, Miles.
This is the last slide. I believe that we have all the direction we've been seeking. Thank you so much. I know this was a lot of information, but as my new metaphor of all the ingredients in a really big recipe. And we appreciate the direction. As for next steps, we will be putting our, we will regroup internally to set some dates to get items on the working calendar. We will come back with the timelines, staffing needs, funding needs, potential resources, follow-up on some of the great resources Councilmember Salas brought forward, and lots of work ahead. With that, is there any further discussion?
Councilmember Shimonie?
Quick question, thank you, Nicole. And again, thank you, Council, but before we get to my concluding comments, I just had a quick question for you, Nicole. With the Downtown Mile, do you know if hiring staff with the funding that we were allocated or are being allocated to oversee, like bike-ped projects, I'm thinking about Martin here, is that something that the Downtown Mile grant funding could provide, is staff support?
I would love to defer to Martin or Jeff on that.
Stacy BK.
Or Stacy BK.
Who's not here?
Yeah, I don't know the answer either. I know the grant application did not include that, but I don't know if that's an eligible expense after the fact. But it was not included in the original grant application.
Okay, I'm just trying to think creatively as to how to...
Yeah, I would be leaning toward a no, but others are closer to it than I am, but I'm pretty sure it's just capital.
Okay.
Just bricks and mortar, yeah.
Martin, we were close, but we'll get it next time. And then my other comment is, you know, Miles, thank you so much for being here, and we so appreciate the partnership with Metro Plan, and my fellow colleagues who are really involved, and really hands-on with Metro Plan. I so appreciate your support and efforts with that partner agency. You all do such important work for our region, and with these topics of capital for the city, so thank you. It means a lot to me. I do see we have our comments online, so I'm going to hold my closing statement. Until then, thank you.
Yep, thank you. I'll go to the other commenter.
Mayor and Council, I have Tyler. Tyler, you can go ahead and address Mayor and Council.
Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is Tyler Denham. First off, I apologize if the audio is bad. I'm currently traveling outside of Flagstaff on a business trip. That said, I'm happy to hear the City Council discussing the Big Shift, as I believe it's an important topic for Flagstaff's future. I am supportive of the changes that are part of the Big Shift, and after looking over the city staff's presentation, I think the best way to support it is with changes to our engineering design standards and land use. You seem to be the most effective policy lovers, and there's actually a very interesting example of this in the presentation. I think you saw in Boulder, Colorado, when they reduced the speed limit signs by five miles per hour, traffic speed was unaffected. To reduce traffic speed, they had to change the design of the road, how it's physically built. A nice, clear illustration of the difference between real and merely decorative changes. I also have a thought to share on potential hesitancy to embrace the Big Shift. I think a lot of hesitancy is motivated by a view that the status quo balance of transportation modes is natural, but that's mistaken. There's nothing natural about Americans generating 16,000 vehicle miles traveled per capita, while the British generate only 7,000. We're about Americans dying to traffic fatalities at a rate of 13 for 100,000 residents, while in Japan, it's only four. There's no secret American gene that makes us drive more and die more than other similarly developed nations. We have these poor outcomes because our infrastructure prioritizes vehicle traffic. And our infrastructure doesn't happen organically, it's dictated by the choices of policymakers like yourself. So, there is no natural, there's only choices, and keeping the status quo is as much an intentional choice as embracing change. So, thank you very much for your time. Oh, actually, one more thing. Paul Byer wanted to give comment, but had to drop off. He said he emailed his comments instead, and I encourage you to read those, if you get the chance. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, Tyler. With that, Shimonie, the floor is yours.
That'll take us home. I just wanted to thank the team, Jeff, Nicole, Jenny, Martin, Miles, David Wessel, City Manager Clifton, Vice Mayor and Council, and all the many other team players that are part of Team Flag, and the capital team that are working on this big shift. I am just beyond ecstatic about the direction that the city of Flagstaff is heading in, as I'm heading out. So, I feel really good about where we are heading, and where we're at as a city, and I feel confident in the direction that you all, with your leadership and accountability, will take the community, too. This is about, I think, like three years of fairs put into one agenda item of, so this was a lot, and I really appreciate your attention, Councilmembers and staff, to seeing this agenda item through. There's a lot on this, and I think we covered a lot of ground really efficiently, so thank you, staff, for setting that up so smooth. I think, you know, although Metro Plan is leading on many of these topics, and I'm so grateful for that, having Council give clear support and direction on these points, I think will help staff tremendously, and give staff that direction that they need to really see these ideas through, and not just on paper, but in action. So, I'm grateful for Council taking the time to do that. And I just wanted to end with, I remember my first meeting with Jeff, Rick Barrett, and Martin, and we met for an hour in the upstairs meeting room, and five hours later, Jeff comes out, and Martin and I are still talking, and we're still trying to figure it out, and Jeff goes, "Did you guys figure it out yet?" And we said, "Yes, we're on our way." And three years later, I really do feel like we are on our way, so just a fun reflection point. But thank you all so much, I'm just beyond grateful, and very excited. Thank you, and have a great night.
Anything else from Council? All right, thank you, Nicole, thank you, Jeff, Miles, Martin, thank you. Jenny, I forgot her, too.
All right. With that, we are down to Agenda Item 12, informational items, two from Mayor, Council, and City Manager.
Mayor, just wanted to let you know that we do not have public participation for item number 11.
Oh, yep. All right, thank you. And then, so Agenda Item 12, informational items. We'll start with Councilmember House.
Thank you, wasn't quite ready. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I wanted to just offer praise for the Indigenous Day celebration. It was absolutely amazing, and deeply insightful, very powerful, and a strong call to action for uplifting and empowering Indigenous voices, and also action in our community for the support of really at heart Indigenous life and culture. I think one of the most powerful things that came out of that was the statement from one of the presenters in the morning, saying that, you know, current generations are in fear of not living to see themselves become elders in their community. And that is a statement that will stay with me, I think, for at least the rest of my time on Council, if not the rest of my life. So, just a very powerful presentation, and I'm so thankful to the team that put that together. Yesterday was also Global Mental Health Day, which is just a reminder to continue battling the stigma of mental health, mental health challenges, and mental illness. And I just wanted to take a moment to call out that October is also Housing America Month, and give a shout-out to the Housing Section staff, and all those working to advance affordable housing and equitable housing opportunities in our community. And that's it.
Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, I'm going to go through this list as quick as I can. I just want to give Chief Mussum a shout-out for hosting that town hall, I thought he did a great job, and those who showed up in person, thank you. I tuned in virtually, thought that was a good discussion, and I'm looking forward to the Council discussion on that next week, I believe it is. Big shout-out to the indigenous Peoples' Day team that worked on that, Rose Fawn, I saw Sarah and Sam both there, from city staff, and others who were in attendance, Councilmembers, Mayor, your comments. I thought that was a great event, and I especially wanted to shout out the youth members, who were part of that panel, and all the youth members that were in attendance, that was incredible. And I know Daryl Marx had a big role in that, so thank you all that were involved with that. This Wednesday, we have our next Indigenous Commission meeting from 12 to 1:00 p.m., and we're going to be discussing the Thorpe Parcel Annex, and I'm looking forward to that discussion. This Wednesday, tomorrow, at 8:00 a.m., right here in the chambers, the Council Salary Committee is meeting, and they have been meeting. So, thank you to those serving on that committee, and I'm looking forward to their discussion tomorrow. I believe they'll be voting on the plan that they're going to be recommending to us, I believe sometime in November, if I'm not mistaken, because we need to get it done before the next election cycle occurs, or the next group gets sworn in. So, looking forward to that recommendation coming before us. This Wednesday, the CJCC is meeting from at 3:00 p.m., and again, that is open to the public, so please do join if you'd like to. And that stands for Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. And then, as Nicole mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, this Saturday, we have the Sustainability Fall Festival gathering at the Sustainability Office. And lastly, looking forward to the meeting with the county on Monday. Thank you all so much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I had a list of things I wanted to talk about, but actually, I'm going to switch things up and thank Councilmember Shimonie for his leadership. When we first started talking about the Big Shift, I didn't think it could happen. Years later, here we are, and I just really thank you for your time and effort and leadership on that. Thanks.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I attended the Nois City Forum, it was held in this room. I know, I think all the Councilmembers were there, actually, and I'm looking forward to that. I have a lot of work to do on that issue, and I will do a lot of work on that issue. The other thing that I did last week is, Metro Plan had a important meeting, and we discussed the Stride Forward Regional Transportation Plan, which will be coming to Council pretty soon. So, and I believe Transportation Commission was last week also, so lots going on in transportation. A lot of that got covered again tonight, and for good reason. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Aslan?
I'm good.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adding another detail to the Metro Plan Board meeting last week, Metro Plan is in the process of hiring a transportation demand management...
Planner.
Planner, planner, planner. It's a position for TDM. So, yeah. And then, so, and then, for the November meeting of Metro Plan Stride Forward, sorry, for the November Board Meeting of Metro Plan, the Metro Plan Stride Forward Regional Transportation Plan is scheduled to be adopted. And then, oh, on Monday, just echoing the announcement that there will be a joint City Council and County Board of Supervisor Work Session at 3:00 Monday, October 17th. Thank you.
Thank you. Just have a couple things. Last Friday, it was really great to have Congressman O'Halloran and host Congressman Gallego up in Flag to talk about the Downtown Mile Project. And I'm still giddy about getting that to happen with all this team after so many years. We were the only ones in all of Arizona to get an award, and out of over 260 applicants federally, nationwide, they only gave 26 in for grants out. So, we are one lucky bunch. Yes, appreciated everyone brought up the Indigenous Peoples' Day. Fortunately, I wasn't able to be there for as much as I would like to, because I was in a three-hour session with our service providers, with the Arizona Town Hall, and NAU regarding mental health, substance use, and homelessness, which they are also, will be holding another one in Tempe for statewide next month, and I'm honored to be on the mayor's panel for that discussion alongside Cory Woods, Greg McFarron, and, yeah, anyways. Aside from that... Aside from that, looking forward to tomorrow's first responders luncheon, so thank you all. Meeting adjourned. Oh, City Manager, did you have something?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.